And our broadcast. And we'll look to our audience in just a moment, anybody who's here or not.
Andy, have a look at the screen and sort of read anyone that might be in the online or this. It's comforting, you know.
That font is a little small up there.
Yeah, that's okay. We have, do we have anyone in attendance? Is that zero?
There are a few more, a few more coming in. So just us in the room here, but we have a few other in the public. Looks like they're just going in maybe. So that might be it.
Okay, great. All right, we're recording now, so it's seven o'clock this evening, and my apologies to those who are off my, my, my right and left shoulders. My name is Rob Chanpetty. I'm pleased to serve as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals and with me this evening are our CBA members and we're about to go through a roll call, establish that we have a forum. I'll introduce the board very quickly and we will then go through sort of a flow of the night. We'll take roll call and then what I'd like to do before we get into the public hearings is just for anyone that might not be familiar with how we run the zoning board of appeals, I'll just go through a quick sort of architecture of how we flow in these meetings and then without further ado, we'll jump right into our public hearings. We'll go in the order that we have before us on the agenda and then we'll pick each of these matters in that sequence and that will essentially be the flow. So beginning this evening, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, this is the City of Newbury Board Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to take a quick moment and introduce members of the board. My immediate left, our vice chair, Mr. Ken Swanton, to his left, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, to his left, Mr. Gregory Bennet, member, to our far left down the, the end of the table, Mr. Larry Ginta, associate member, and to my immediate right, Mr. Walter Bud Chen. Again, my name is Rob Chanpetty as chair. So I'll call the role and I'll ask members of the ZBA to just please respond with either here or present. Mr. Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Bennet.
Here.
Mr. Ginta.
Present.
Mr. Chen.
Here.
Rob Chanpetty, present. That's six president, present. In order to run the business of the ZBA, we have to at least have five members present. Just to give you an overview of what is legally required to be successful in any application, you must have at least four votes in the affirmative, so four yes votes. I will establish for legal purposes, we have five voting members. Those voting members will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennet, and Mr. Chen, and Mr. Ginta as our associate member and our sixth member for this evening will be participating in all of the deliberations. He'll be participating in asking any questions and only if there is a recusal by another member, Mr. Ginta will step up and will be a fifth voting member. So the way we run the flow of a ZBA hearing for those that might not be familiar, I begin by reading the legal, the legal description of each application. I start by just simply in as natural language as is possible, describing the applicant by name, the address. And then we describe and describe, we, I'll describe just for purposes of hearing it out loud, what the applicant is seeking in terms of the lease. We'll use language like the applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, et cetera, for a special permit, special permit for nonconformities, variance. And then of course, we'll describe even more granularly than that. You know, the applicant is seeking to demolish a, you know, a, an outdoor three season room and reconstruct, et cetera. So it'll be as natural a progression of just a description. You, you need to have to be able to read an agenda or even have it in front of you to have a general sense of what it is that's before us and that's by making it as approachable and accurate. Once I've read the legal description, we'll then hear from the applicant and the applicant's representative. Oftentimes we'll hear from the applicant, him or ourselves, or their legal counsel, or their architect, or engineer, or all of the above. Once the applicant has presented the application, I close that portion of the public hearing. We then go into the second portion, which is questions from, I'm sorry, public comment. During public comments, and I'll take a moment to just introduce Mr. Andy Port, our, our planning director in the City of Newbury Port, and Ms. Gretchen Joy over there by herself at her own table as our, as our noble keeper, keeper of the minutes. Gretchen's unenviable task is to write down everything everybody says, so. We, we will put up a slide where we ask everyone to kindly keep your remarks to about two minutes if you can. I have wide discretion and I exercise it pretty widely, so we will be as courteous as possible to, you know, let someone come to a conclusion on their comments. We ask that if you do choose to make your public comment, if you choose to make a public comment, to please just give your name and address for Gretchen so that she can record it in the minutes. And then if you choose to frame your comments in the form of a question, please know that we won't be able to respond directly to that question, but we mean no dis courtesy in that failure to respond. That's not us ignoring the question, but rather just taking it in. You will almost assuredly hear the framework of your question recast by one of the members during the next and third section of our hearing, which is questions from the board. So please feel free to frame your comments in a question if you choose. Know that we won't respond, but we are listening and taking notes. So once we go through the public comment and I will go through the room with a show of hands, again, name and address, and then speak your mind. You neither be pro nor con, though you're welcome to say so. You can simply share your thoughts. I'll then go to online. Anyone who's online through our hybrid broadcast can then just simply raise their virtual hand. We'll recognize them and he will open their mic and he'll hear from them. Once that's completed, we close that section and we go to questions from the board. This is what members of the board, one by one, will ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's representatives. They may reframe questions in the form of, i- if from comments that we heard during the public comment section. Once everyone has had their, their, their time and had an opportunity to, to pose any questions for each application, I close that section and we go to the final section of our hearing, which are deliberations. Deliberations are merely everyone in this room getting to hear us think out loud. We think out loud and discuss amongst ourselves in full, you know, in, in full disclosure and full view, audibly and otherwise, to wrangle with the legal criteria of whether the applicant met their burden, whether they, they showed enough information or evidence, you know, to warrant a special permit or a variance or what have you. And we'll hear, pardon me. And you'll hear the members have these discussions and I will, you know, I moderate Douglas Chair. Once we go through deliberations, I then close that final portion, portion of the hearing and we, I, I will at that point elicit from any member of the ZBA a motion to approve. And under Robert's rules of order, we sort of abide by a very hybrid version. In order to put the, the matter on for a vote, a member has to make a motion and that motion is always framed in the affirmative. It's always in the form of a motion to approve. That doesn't mean that that member supports the application or plans to vote me affirmative. It's just the legal framework by which that question is placed on the cable. It is then seconded. Once the motion is made and seconded, I take a vote. We take a vote call and in order for the application to succeed, it must have four votes of yes. That's essentially it for each and every application. I always try to take a moment and go through that in case folks aren't familiar, you know, sort of, you know, as, as my grandfather used to say, tell them what you're going to tell them, then tell them, then tell them what you told, you know, if you ever, ever had a question about going through this kind of material anyhow. So with that, we'll go with the first application we have this evening. This is the application of Jean Al AIA on behalf of twenty six Beacon Avenue. This matter was continued from April ninth, twenty twenty four. The applicant seeks all necessary permissions, applications, permits, or approvals for a special permit for nonconformities to demolish an existing single family structure and construct a new single family home on a lot with a nonconforming area and frontage.
Attorney General. Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening, Douglas DeShane, representing the applicant on, on the phone with us this evening, I believe, is Jean Al. And, and as you mentioned, Jean had made the original application. I'd like to thank finally here, I do appreciate the, the previous extension, our continuance you granted us. It did give me an opportunity to meet with our neighbors and to work through some of their concerns and I think you'll hear today that we were able to do some good work in, in meeting that. So if I could, I'll, I'll walk through my presentation. I do have some extra copies in case anyone would like to see the pictures better. I know sometimes it's difficult to see them or perhaps if someone in the audience wants to see them, I have them, but.
I'm sorry. Just so folks know, everything is on the website portal here. If you're not familiar, everything, because on the city's website, you can access all the materials the applicants have submitted.
Right, and I'm sorry to turn my back. So again, for the record, Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, representing Draken Tola and Buana Lena, who are the owners of the property. And as I mentioned early, Jean Allen is our architect and was the original applicant in the project. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. To give you a quick summary of the project, my clients would like to raise the existing structure at twenty six Beacon Avenue and build a larger home in its place. As determined by your zoning enforcement officer, we are required to obtain a special permit from this board under section nine B three C, a special permit for nonconformities. And the reason for that is because we have an undersized lot. And whenever you're increasing the size of the home on an undersized lot, if it's more than five hundred square feet, you need a, a special permit from this board. Otherwise, it would be straight to building permit. To give you an understanding of the existing conditions, if we could, I go any. The, as I mentioned, the existing lot is in fact preexisting nonconforming. It is eighty five hundred ninety one square feet, where ten thousand square feet is required to be conforming. Not the smallest lot I've seen, but we are still shy approximately fourteen hundred square feet of being conforming. The lot is also preexisting nonconforming as to frontage. We have eighty six feet of frontage where ninety feet is required. So again, not quite there. The existing home is also preexisting nonconforming as to two dimensional setbacks. Currently, the house is set back only twenty one point three feet, where the bylaws or the ordinances require twenty five feet. Our side yard setback to the right is only nine point six feet, where the ordinance requires ten feet. So those are two additional nonconformities associated with the existing proposal. We could, okay. With respect to the zoning impacts of this proposal, the proposed reconstruction, first of all, eliminates those preexisting nonconforming front and side yard setbacks. So the new home will meet all of those requirements and we are not creating any new nonconformities. If we did, we'd be here for variance and we are not, so we are not creating any new conformities. However, the new home will meet all dimensional regulations, including setbacks, lot coverage, open space, height. We will conform to every dimensional requirement under the ordinances. However, we are not proposing any changes to the lot. We can't, you know, purchase more property or provide more frontage, so the lot itself will not be affected in any way. So if I could give you an understanding of where this home is, this is a, a City of Newbury Port assessors map and you can see Bay Beacon Street, twenty six Beacon Avenue, rather, is my client's property. It's marked there in yellow. And you'll see that we are just about at the intersection of Oak Street and Beacon Avenue. Because I want to give you an overview of what the neighborhood is about. But let me start with the next plan, which this is a plan showing the existing footprint of the existing home. And I'll run through this kind of quickly because it's, you know, what's there today is, is not necessarily all that relevant to what is proposed, but I did want to show you that the house is currently a few feet too close to the street and too close to our neighbor on the right. But that is the existing situation. I'll, the next three slides Andy will run through really quickly. These are just elevations of the existing home. As you can see, it's a smaller single story home. And, and it's pretty basic in design, but that is what we are, what's there today. These are the floor plans of that home. You can see again, it's pretty straightforward, but there is a existing small second floor and of course, the full size first floor. All right, if I could then turn to the pictures, here's a picture of the existing home. The next slide shows you, this is our, our neighbors to the left, the Comos, who are here this evening. And the next picture is our, our neighbors to the right. I have not had the benefit of speaking with them, but I did want to see, give you a picture of what our neighbors' homes look like, this being a two and a half story home, which is what we're proposing, whereas the Comos home is a, a one and a half story structure. Next slide, please. So, let me now propose to you what we want to do. This, this plan shows the proposed footprint of the new home. You'll see that there's the outer dotted box is essentially the construction zone that you're allowed to put a home in that outer box and. That's this box here. This represents the required setbacks from, from the regulations. As you can see, our home is meets the ten feet on both sides and meets the, the twenty five feet in the back. And now we are pushing the house backward back so that we are in excess of the twenty five feet front yard setback. So that's how I'm saying we're now eliminating those preexisting nonconforming setbacks and this will meet everything. If you look at the, and I know it's a difficulty, but there's a chart at the top which identifies the fact that we meet the open space requirement. Forty percent open space is required. We will be at sixty seven percent. We meet all the dimensional setbacks and the height. This zone allows for thirty five feet. We are at thirty two feet. So again, meeting all requirements. Here is a elevation of the proposed home, front elevation of the home. You can see it is in my opinion, a well-designed home, uses a variety of textures and siding as well as different roof angles to break up some of the massing and scaling. In other words, it's not just a big square box. And as you can see, we are proposing dormers over the garage as well, again, to help break up that roof massing that you would see from the street. The next shots are essentially the rear elevation of the home and then the right and then the left elevation. There's a left elevation and there is the right elevation, which has the garage. So you can see it's a lower structure. We could, and a quick shot of what the proposed floor plans are. You can see first floor, you have your garage, dining and living room area, a small office and a kitchen eating area. And then a second floor is where we have our four bedrooms, a, a small den area and bathrooms. And then on the top floor, there is a family, just a single room, standard room. So now to give you an understanding of the neighborhood, again, we're back to the, the assessors map and what I'm going to show you are pictures. And I, oh, we can just go back for a minute. I, I apologize. I guess I don't have a picture of this all. But I do have pictures of this, this, the home here, the homes here, and the homes here. So we can give you a good feel for what the neighborhood is, is like and what some of the houses surrounding us look like. The first picture is right across the street. And then you'll see off to the right there, that's Oak Street. The next picture is now panning over to Oak Street and you can see this is at the corner of Oak and Beacon, like sort of directly across from us, diagonally across from us. And it is a fairly large home. And then as we continue the circle, and that's actually a good, I guess, another close up of that home. The next picture, now we're looking down Oak Street and you can see that on that, on the left side of the home, the left side of the street, most of the homes are, you know, two and a half stories, they're good sized homes. Although they generally appear to be a little more boxy, but nevertheless, still have significant size and massing. The next, the next picture is the picture that the greenhouses are our neighbors to Comos. And then you can see as we go down Oak Street, the, the yellow house there and that yellow home is visible, you know, from the backyard of, of my client's proposed lot. And then all right, I'm actually at my conclusion and then I want to add a little more information. So with respect to my conclusion, I believe my clients are entitled to this permit because as required under your ordinances, there are essentially two analysis that are taken, undertaken. The first one is that the proposal cannot create any new nonconformities. And or otherwise, as the board knows, you, you need to commit for variance. So because our proposed home eliminates the preexisting nonconforming setbacks and it does not create any new conformities, I believe we get past the first test. The second test is whether or not this new home will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And in, in deciding whether this will be significantly detrimental to the neighborhood, the board looks at things like the, the surrounding neighborhood, what are the structures like around, like? What is the massing and scaling of the building? How will it fit into the general neighborhood and, and those kinds of analysis? With respect to that test, if you will, as I've mentioned probably a couple of times, the new home will meet all dimensional regulations, including setbacks, lot coverage, open space height, which in fact is beneficial to the neighborhood. It, it is always best when every home in a neighborhood or as many as possible do in fact meet setbacks, height restrictions and everything else, so that we don't experience overcrowding or in, and negative impacts to our neighbors. As I said, the new home, its size, its scale, its massing is generally in keeping with the neighborhood. As I've shown you, we've employed a lot of things to break up the massing and scaling, the use of dormers and, and windows and, and whatnot, different roof lines are, are all intended to move away from a, a big box look to a, a more pleasant view. However, I do want to point out, as you saw in many of those pictures, there are a fair number of two and a half story, larger homes in the neighborhood. So I would say that our home is, is generally in keeping with the, with the neighborhood. There are some smaller homes. There are some one and one and a half story homes. But it is a good mix, as you've seen from the picture. There, you know, there are, especially along Oak Street, there are some rather large homes. The home to our immediate right is two and a half stories. The homes to the, to the corners are two and a half stories. So we're not going to be out of place in the neighborhood. I know that beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but I would suggest that the new home will be significantly more aesthetically pleasing than the current home, at least in terms of its architecture. And the new home will be will, will necessarily be substantially more valuable. I mean, this new home will appraise and be valued much higher than the existing home, which actually has a beneficial impact on the neighborhood because it helps to raise values in the neighborhood. The newer, the, the larger, the more valuable homes are, their prices are up. That reflects very well on the neighborhood. Also, this home will be valued much higher than the existing home. So the, the city will be collecting more tax revenue from this property, which, you know, all of that tax revenue is you know, part of what runs this city. So it's a benefit to the city. And as I said, you know, in closing, the, the increasing, the aesthetics and the value of this home will help to increase the property values in the neighborhood. So I, I, I would suggest to the board that this is not going to have a significantly detrimental impact on the neighborhood. But rather will provide some benefits to the neighborhood and increased values and, and increased aesthetic. So I think in general, this will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. So that is the presentation and, and that is as it was originally filed. However, as you may recall, our, our neighbors, the Comos, Rich and Sue, they live at seventeen Oak Street. They are about to the right. They had concerns about the impact that this larger structure would have on their home, you know, being the required ten feet from the property line. You know, that outer wall of the home, two and a half stories would be facing their house and they were concerned that it would be overbearing on them. Again, with all due respect, I, you know, my clients have designed this to meet all of your rules and regulations, but they did, as I mentioned to the board earlier, I did meet with our neighbors. We talked about their issues and, and ways that we could have helped to lessen the impact on them. And there was an excellent suggestion made that if perhaps we flip the house so that we put, rather than having the driveway on the right side, and Andy, I think I, my next picture is here, here we go. So the suggestion was rather than having the house here, adjacent to the Comos here and the garage on this side, where we already have a very large neighbor. Suggestion was made that if we could flip the garage onto the other side, that would have less impact on the Comos properties. Because now they would be looking at the side of the one and a half story garage and the actual two and a half story wall would be set back some additional twenty five or thirty feet. So my clients agreed to do that. So we are now proposing and would ask the board to consider allowing us to place the house in this configuration, rather than everything we've, we've presented. Now, I, unfortunately, while I was able to get new elevation plan showing the flip, we couldn't get a survey plan done quick enough to show the revised footprint. But I can assure the board that the new house will sit right in that new, you know, the, the building envelope. It will meet all the required setbacks. It's just that the garage will be on the right and the ba, the, the larger part of the home, excuse me, on the left and the larger part of the home would be on the right. So I'd ask the board in considering this, if, if you find that we've met the burden of showing no significant detrimental impacts to the neighborhood and in light of the fact that I was able to show you the elevations of what the new house would be, I would ask the board to consider perhaps a condition of approval that would require us to submit to you an updated, you know, site plan showing how the footprint now sits. But with respect to setbacks and everything else, nothing will change. We're just flipping the house over and and we just couldn't get that plan done. So I'd ask you to consider the proposal whereby the house, the garage would be to the left, adjacent to the calls.
Okay, thank you, Attorney General. Anything further before we close?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, great. We will close that portion of the public hearing and put up our public comment slide for a moment. Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in connection with the application, just kindly get my attention with your head and we will, we will hear from you.
Yes, sir. Yes, please. I'm here, Kowalski. I am fifteen, the yellow house that you saw on the back. And I also own the house across the street from me, which would be sixteen and eighteen, okay. We're hearing a lot of this sugar coated by you. A lot of what you said is your opinion, okay? A lot of those houses that you pointed out, living my neighbors on that corner, they are two and a half, but they're addicts on the second floor, because I own two that have the addicts. This house that he's planning on putting in my backyard is going to block all my sun. It's, I have four children. All the kids play in our pool in my neighborhood. It's going to block all the sun there. It is going to be detrimental to my lot. I don't understand why we're having this conversation about giving somebody relief on something that's not a hardship. I could have bought that lot a lot cheaper than that. It was offered to me. So I didn't buy it because I knew what I could do with it. George Hazel. Pat Reddy wanted to buy it. These are all builders who have built homes in the area. They knew what they could do with it. They knew what the ZBA was standing for. Is it, is it so now that we can go buy lots and just get away with building what we want? These people hired this lawyer to build this house in my neighborhood that I've been here twenty three years. And they're going to sell that house because they have a reputation and a backlog of doing this, buying these homes, selling them. Okay? It's not right to do that to us. Dave Berlin's not here. He owns the gray house on the right. I've been on the phone with him. He's got some issues with his daughters, me. He's trying to get in where he's going to get on the, get on the thing here. He's quite upset about it too. I'm upset about it. He's upset about it. And I think you're going to hear from the Comos. You're wrong. I'm upset about it, he's upset about it, and I think you're going to hear from the Comos. You're wrong. They are upset about it, too. Okay, they have not changed anything.
Sir, I'll just ask it and with all courtesy, if you could just direct your comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I uh, I just want to make sure that we, we pay for it, you know, of course.
I I apologize.
I uh, I I also want to remind you, just within the interest of everyone sort of having a say, I want to make sure that you have time to to um. Close out your remarks, but I'm sure certainly, I just want to, we we try to adhere to sort of two minutes ish, but I want to always try to adhere to the end of. Thoughts and comments, so I would extend you every bit of that courtesy. So. Um, I'll just let you continue and and if you could um.
Wrap it up.
Well, if you if you're about to wrap up.
Okay, so basically, that house is very tall. It's going to block out all our light. It's going to give us a shadow effect in my property. Okay, it's going to. It it's going to impact me, it's going to impact David Lynn, it's going to impact the Comos, my neighbor to the right, Daniel, it's going to impact his view and his son. Uh, coming to his lot. I don't understand why we would give relief to something that's nonconforming into that purpose. A lot of other people have done something with this lot. What he did not mention in his whole speech was, how big is the house? What's the square footage? Does anybody know?
So we'll get to that likely in questions.
Okay, we're going from a very small home. To a very large home. And it and it's going to look ridiculous on that postage stamp. It really is.
Thank you for your.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Um, anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application?
Yes, sir.
And then man, I'll.
Rich, Richard Hall, my assistant.
Thank you.
As it was. We had.
Mr. Comos, your address again, please.
I seventeen Ocean. We had concerns. Uh, you all have copies of our concerns. Doug met with us. We were in all those experiences, we walked out into our backyard. Uh, leave that with the house being flipped over, that would. You'll agree? Okay. That would meet our needs, considering it's going to be that house, and that's the best way to have it, is the way with the garage to be. On one side and the and the power equipment. So that's for us.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Comos. Um, yes.
So, Sue Como and neither, uh, they're in seventy though. Um, we're we're just speaking for ourselves, not for any other neighbors. I mean, everybody needs to speak for their own selves. We are concerned to have. The. The feel that we have in our backyard, which is why we bought the property that we lived at. That the coziness of, you know, it the quiet, um, it's a privacy feeling. We did the on a tower of. Windows hanging over us and we didn't want to um. You know. Just that feeling like something's like hanging over us, we show this. We walked along the rail trail one day, we took a picture of it. Uh, bitch standing in front of a three-story wall. They call it two and a half, but to me it's a three-story house, like, like pizza. A big tall house and and we, he stood ten of his feet away from it and he was like lost by it. So we go, oh my God, that's next to us. It's going to look so strange. So, and feels so strange, and just going to lose lose the quality of our night throw backyard. We have a one and a half story house. It's not even really, it's it's a one-story house with a built-in attic, so. We're trying to keep this, ultimately, we'd like to keep the scale of the neighborhood, uh, they, the uh, plans and whatnot show. All kinds of pictures of all kinds of wonderful two and a half, three-story houses in the neighborhood. Some of them have been there historically, some of them are newer. Some of them are 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 outrageously. Like all sensatious for the neighborhood, but they're there, but what what we'd like to point out, just like, you know, little corner, it's like. Except, oh yeah, the one that's been there forever and uh, the neighbor's house and. You know, if you look down beacon, there's small cottages, you look up beacon, there's small cottages. Capes and whatever. So we're just trying to keep that cozy here, which is why we moved back to this area in the first place, because I grew up in there before. Just trying to keep the scale. But, you know, people own their property, they have a right, I guess, ultimately, to do what they want with it with a reason. So my thought was, well, at least would you please not put that three-story wall of windows. You know, facing our little yard. So, we asked for that and. Doug um, spoke on our behalf to the owners. And we also, also, uh, request was that if they had any, um, like such a big house, maybe acquire. You know. Heating systems and. Central air systems and heat pumps and all, all that equipment that seems to be outside of these great big houses. Could they please not put those like right next to, you know, like right near our yard? So that's all we hear, because we live outdoors and I, yeah. Um, so those are our wishes, our concerns, our request, but only speaking for ourselves. Um. You kind of can't fight a flood, but. I mean, I agree to some extent, we think that. Yeah, it's going to ruin, it's going to ruin the look, the sun, the this, that, the other. But that was our request, at least, would you please not put the big side next to us?
Good, thank you for your comments. Uh, anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? Looking to my area.
I I just didn't, not that, you know, it's not one of these things like, well, not in my backyard, but I don't want to like put it on the other guy's side, but. He already has a big house with. This equipment and whatnot, so.
Do you know the address of that other next door?
It's twenty-six.
Great, um, thank you again. Uh, any further comments in the room before I go to our participants online? Anyone? See no further hands, and if you change your mind before we close out.
Uh, David Berlin says, I am dialed in and trying to raise my hand, you know, learn them.
No, no, we we're about to get there, so. Yeah, no, no, we we we're, no problem, all right. Um, so. We uh, we.
Should I just tell him standby?
Well, yeah, if he's listening, uh, he'll hear the BSA, but you're welcome to as well. Um, so uh, now we've gone through anyone, and thank you for that, buddy. Um, anyone that we've got, anyone in the room who wishes to speak, will now go to our online. Uh, attendees, and I'll ask uh, Mr. Port to. Uh, first person is David. Uh, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Can you, can you hear us? Can you, you have to join the audio.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, if you have two microphones on in the same space, we're going to get um, duplicated.
Yeah, I know, we weren't sure. We're trying to make it work, so we tried, I just hung up from the other device.
Yeah, perfect. We have you clearly now, thank you.
Yeah, so this is uh, David Berlin and my wife, Ayesha. We uh, live in the abutting property. Uh, directly next door at twenty-four Beacon Avenue. Just to identify ourselves.
Thank you.
And um, and so, uh, just a little bit of history here. Uh, um, when, when the um. When the uh, the proposal first came to us. Um, I discovered uh, some errors in the drawings. And um, I brought, and then shortly thereafter, the uh, the new buyers of the property showed up. And I said, I'm not going to make any. We're not going to make any decisions or have any comments until we see a set of accurate drawings, and they said they would get us the accurate drawings and never did. And I just maintain that, um, until we see accurate drawings that reflect what the plan is. We're not going to comment, you know, uh, we're we're going to hold, we're we're going to reserve our comment till we see, you know, our main comments till we see that. However, this is the first time we're hearing about the house being flipped in the other direction. And um, I'll just say that we vehemently oppose that. Because basically, what then you end up with is like this huge wall that's just ten feet away from the side of our house. In a way that, you know, whatever the second or third floor, I'm assuming, I haven't seen the plans yet, will just be looking directly into the windows of our house. So, uh, at this point, I would be very, very much opposed. Um, and then, of course, you know, I still haven't seen, we have not seen a set of accurate plans to reflect the new design. So we would insist that we um, uh, that there be another hearing. Once that, those plans are done, so that we, I I'm giving us sufficient amount of time to review those plans.
Very good. Um, with anything else, sir?
I I I I think that covers it.
Very good. Well, thank you for your comments. Um. Anyone else uh, who is logged on via Zoom? Uh, I see another hand, uh, Andy.
Uh, that was, that's actually David. We did have a, uh, holder we were dialed in, but they seem to have disappeared.
Okay. Uh, and sir, was that the gentleman that you were referring?
Yes, David Berlin, correct.
Um, anyone else online or in the room wish to speak before we close public comment? Seeing. Yes.
Yeah, uh, again, um. For what, uh, uh. Big Berlin said, we're not wishing to like, you know, put our troubles on his side. I I just thought that, well. He's already got a big house, so what's he going to care, but.
Understood.
Yeah, so I mean, it it's a little different than having a big house next to another big house versus a giant house looking over. We have a one and a half. In fact, I wanted to point out that the picture that was shown on that um, screen there. Of our house only shows like a tiny portion of it, not, it's not at all in scale of what's.
Very good.
You know. Okay.
This is by no means, and this is by no means sort of um. A consensus and referendum on how how it goes, but these comments are valuable for us, so I try to entertain them, of course. Um, okay, seeing no other comments, um, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing, and Attorney James, if I might, we're about to go into questions. From the board, I I will take sort of my chairman privilege and I'm going to thrust my question up front, though I typically don't do that. I sense my board members may share this sentiment. I I don't know whether, and I'm going to hear from my colleagues in a moment, as will you, I don't know whether we can in good faith even undertake. Sort of the with further examination of this without having the proper plans. Um, and knowing that all of the letters that were noticed were noticed to those plans. Because the the flip is, it's relevant and maybe ameliorative as to one neighbor, but. It more impactful um, to the corresponding neighbor, um, if it it would seem. And perhaps others, uh, but I just wanted to, I I want to just um, ask, go through our board with questions. And then certainly we'll give you an opportunity to um, to respond, but. Um, when we, when we begin, it's just one of the.
Sure, um. My first question, I I guess came up from one of the people's folk, but I was also curious about it. The current house is, according to assessments records, a small house, one thousand one hundred and two square feet. How big is this proposed house?
Um, I I would have to, um, I, Jean, um, Allen, our architect, is on the line. She has her hand raised. I'm sure she can grant you that information.
Uh, well, perhaps, uh, Andy, if we can unmute Ms. Allen's mic, just to try to answer Mr. Swanton's question, she should be able, um. Ms. Allen, you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Um, so. You heard Mr. Swanton's question, and if you can offer um, any response to it, we certainly uh, would invite that.
It's twenty-one hundred square feet. On the the first floor level.
Okay, but I mean, how many on, if you add up all three floors?
It's about a little under five thousand square feet. And can I just add that, can I just add that, um. When we began the process, we did have a site plan that was mislabeled. And we corrected that, but other than that. The drawings are accurate. And everything that we have submitted has, is accurate. And has been posted online for three months now, um, open to public view.
Okay, well, but if I may, respectfully, in fairness, the latest flip of the footprint, that's new, correct?
Uh, yes, flipping flipping the garage to the the other side is new, yes.
Okay, um, all right, I I appreciate your comments. Um, let's continue with questions. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, just to drill down that little bit further. How new is it? Uh, because I looked at this stuff heavily this morning, you didn't say that, so so when. What was the new design submitted to the town's um. Planning site? I mean, is that available to to all the public?
That was this afternoon. Yeah, just this afternoon.
What was that? What time was it?
Mid-afternoon. As I said, we, we, you know, we, we had this filed, everything was, we were prepared to come in and seek vows. But in working with the neighbors. As, you know, we had indicated we would. You know, this came up, this is a big change. So in order to get, you know. These plans done in time, it was not possible. But I thought it was important that we we present this to the board.
I understand that, but it's always hard on us and other people who are watching this, um, when stuff that comes in at the very last second. So what we have new, uh, these two pages you showed, there's no new site plan, there's no new.
No, we couldn't get a site plan done in.
No elevations from the other side, but I guess they're just the same, they're just north and south.
Just flipped.
Okay, um, fine. Um, I another question, because one of the things we do here is we try to answer some of the questions that came up during. The discussion, um. Roughly speaking, a house that's nearly five thousand square feet is going to have some rather large mechanical devices, air conditioning equipment, you know, deep pump, all this stuff. Have you figured out where that stuff's all going?
Well, we've committed.
It's going in the basement, and then there's another unit up in the attic under the eaves. So there won't be any exposed equipment on the um. In the yards.
So there's no large air compressor condensers? I mean, how you do that?
Yeah, that that would be the airhead.
Yeah, there there'd be a compressor in the back, but everything else, all the the um. The equipment would be inside the building, but yes, one compressor.
Okay, and that would be in the backyard, basically.
In the back, we've already committed that it would not be on the side facing the Comos. In fact, it won't face either of our side neighbors.
I mean, a lot of this discussion is around massing, as you yourself said, and you know, as I go up and down Beacon Street, I. I see an awful lot of small cottages that are kind of like what's there now, you know, one story, one and a half story. Um, so it's, you know, the man, the nearly five thousand square foot house is my primary question, really, and I guess you just answered, so I have. No more questions at this time.
Thank you, um, Mr. Swan.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Attorney, uh, Attorney Shane. Is is the Bjorkland case applicable to this matter?
Well, I'm not familiar with that.
What was the question? Can you repeat the question?
It is a particular legal case. Applicable to this matter, the Bjorkland case, it's a Supreme Judicial Court case. That deals with undersized lots and the teardown and uh. Of the existing smaller home, and in the Bjorkland case, I think they built, they went from a six hundred square foot. Uh, cake to a thirty-six hundred square foot. Building, and the Supreme Judicial Court basically said, can't do that. Um, so I think that, you know, I'd like to know if that's applicable to this matter or not, and it may not be, but I'd like to, I'd like. For you to answer that question for me. And uh. I have another question for you. Was it, oh, yes, with respect to um, the the. The less tall side, the garage side, how tall is that? And maybe Jean can answer that question.
Let's me see, hang on one second. I believe that is. Twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet is the garage side, and what's the uh, the the big tall side is? Is.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, so that's.
Thirty-three to the, to the mean between the, the peak, or thirty-three to the peak?
To the mean, okay. Uh, okay, so that's just the tenth foot, okay, so it's roughly a third smaller, okay. And uh, to to one of the um. One of the questions raised by a member of the public, is is this a flip?
I have no idea. I do know my clients um, do flips, but I. It's immaterial to my job. I, as the neighbor had mentioned, you know, any number of people wanted to buy their house. I I don't know what their purpose or desire was.
Okay, thanks. Very good, um, Mr. Becker? Oh, wait a minute, there was a question, I apologize, Mr. Swan. Did Attorney James, did you wish to address any point of the um. Uh, the Bjork case that was.
No, I'm going to have to research it and I'll provide.
Sure.
I mean, it sounds like the fact that we need to get you a new site plan is going to.
Perhaps.
Push for a continue, potentially push for continuance.
Um, we're going to go through the rest of questions from the board, then we we might just pull my colleagues and perhaps preempt um. Further. further, um, further exercise in the hearing if we're going to need further information, but we'll, uh, go through questions and finish at the start of Mr. Bennet. No question, um, very good, but Mr. Ginta.
Has this house been built before in Newburyport?
I do, well, perhaps, uh, Jean could.
What was the question again?
Has this house been built before in Newburyport?
No. No, absolutely not.
This is a house that looks just like this house, about five houses down from me.
Um. E- Erie, uh, Crowell. Okay, um, it appears they don't, i- if they, they're not aware.
Well, I think that there's a lot of houses in Newburyport that look similar, you have the, the colonial design, you know, it's pretty standard, so there are a lot of common design elements that you would see from house to house.
Uh, yeah, I think fairly it could be, it could be similar, it could be, it could be similar, but not, it's not your work product, is, is what I think.
No, no.
I, I only ask because if you were to say that it was the same house, it would give us all the ability to take a look at the massing of the house and how it, how it looks in the neighborhood, that's all I was getting at, but if it's not your work, my apologies.
Very good, um, thank you, I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, Mr. Ginta, what address did you give?
Hey, John, uh, the house that looks similar to this is on Pro Lane.
Okay, what about Ms. Allen, what about, uh, forty-one Mosley? Did you?
The one on Mosley, yes, I designed that and it's, it's sort of this, the, uh, New England farmhouse style with the gable and roofs, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that, it, it, does that look a lot like this house or plans, like, generally?
On the, on the side, um, it has the gable and um, massing, so that would match, that would resemble the forty-one Molton Street House, but there's a lot of, um, rectangular homes with gable and roofs in Newburyport, so it's, I feel it's contextual. And it's, uh, in keeping with the, um, architectural styles of Newburyport.
Okay, um, thank you, is this house taller than forty-one Molton or less tall than forty-one?
It's about the same.
Okay, how, how about the same is about the same?
Um, I would say that the ridges are at the same location, the floor-to-floor heights are, um, they match, they are, uh, in keeping with the forty-one Molton Street House. And the ri- roof, I think, has the same pitch, but, um, it's similar to the forty-one Molton Street House.
Okay, okay, thank you, very good, uh, thank you, Ms. Allen, uh.
Can I just, can I just a- address the, the sun angles and the yard, um?
Actually, if I could, if I could ask your, the courtesy of just you to, if you could hold back for a moment, I just wanna finish the round of our board members with questions. And, and I appreciate your help, and, and, Mr. Ginta, anything further?
No further question.
Very good, um, and, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chen.
I, I just had two quick ones, um, were there any letters you support? I didn't see any on the, uh, on our website, can I get y'all if they're wearing?
Nope, the only written, uh, letter we had received was from the, the commos.
Commos, yeah, and the plot plan has, it does, okay, I was wondering which way it was going. Now I can see the sun, okay, thank you, that's awful.
Very good, um, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chen, um, my only question is a, is a question to my colleagues. Um, given what we have before us and given the change, given the timing of the change and what it appears to be sort of the unfolding of details, is there any member of the ZBA who feels content to be able to proceed to a vote this evening? Uh, and in the alternative, is there any member who would like to see the formality of these plans revised and made available to the public and, and a new date, I guess I just wanna pull your, your thoughts, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, actually, I've seen enough likely votes tonight.
You could, okay, um, Mrs. Bla.
Uh, is this our deliberation or is this just a straw?
It's just a straw poll to see whether we continue and go into deliberations and, uh, feel the, uh, okay, uh, whether we need more information, um.
My opinion is I don't need any further information, either, but, but either way, I think that the basing and scale are wrong.
Okay, fair enough, um, Mr. Bennet.
I'm prepared to vote.
Very good, Mr. Ginta.
I would, um, I would rather see formal plans that reflect what they want to do, but for the, it's.
Very good, um, Mr. Chen.
Yes, my offense, I was prepared to vote. So many who could submit plans after the fact, but, uh, I guess because of the neighbor to the other side is concerned with the massing.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, uh, a new set of plans submitted, so vote home or, I guess.
Let's, um, thank you, let's, uh, continue with, uh, with the flow of this, uh, of the hearing, we'll go into deliberations. I'll close, were there any other questions before we close?
Mr. Berlin is on, he'd like to, he'd like to, he'd like, he'd like to admit, he just went out and measured, he says that the drawings they submitted are inaccurate, he's measuring it. Like, he'd like to comment.
I, I appreciate that, um, I'm going to go through the deliberations, we'll assume, I'll tell you what. Um, why don't we do this for a moment while we're in questions before I close, Andy, if we can open, um, open that microphone and it is forgive me, the gentleman's last name?
Berlin.
Berlin, Mr. Berlin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Well, we, we appreciate your, uh, your, your legwork, um, we're about to close questions and I'd like to
Yeah.
Sort of move the process along, but I wanna give you the courtesy of, of letting us know what,
uh, yeah.
If you take it, you're welcome to share, but I will ask, I, I don't, I, I won't have the luxury of entertaining any further narrative, so I'll ask you to just as quickly and easily as you can, share what you've got.
I, I understand, I just, I, I, th- there's a presentation of facts here and I just wanna make sure the facts are clear. One of those facts is, is that I heard somebody say, uh, we've been working with the neighbors and I've experienced no such thing, really, to be honest, and the site plan, uh, is still inaccurate, if you look at the site plan and you notice that it says twenty-five feet from the side of our house property line, that is not twenty-five feet, that's, uh, fourteen feet, so, um, uh, I just wanna point that, I see that the, the setback from the street to that, to the dwell, to the current dwelling has been fixed, it used to say ten feet. Um, but that, tha- and then the other thing I just wanna point out is I heard that there would be two, uh, in, units indoors to, to, for the air conditioning of five thousand square feet. There are two units indoors, there's gonna be two units outdoors, just wanna point that out, may, those need to be on the site plan as well. There's no way you can service two air handlers with, uh, with one compressor.
And, and may I?
Actually, if I, if I, yes, ma'am?
Oh, I just wanted to point out for the concern of, I guess it's more for the concern of the, of, of the plan being, uh, turned around too. Our generator is actually on the side that they wanna put their living space on. And that can be very loud, so that's just another, that, that's a point for the, for the, for them to consider.
Very good, um, thank you both for your time and, and sharing, then I'm gonna close the questions.
Yes, given this, given this testimony that we've heard, I would like us to revisit the notion of giving plans here that, uh,
That settles.
And, and, yeah, and permit, uh, the applicant to address this, I mean, this is turning into a dog's breakfast, why don't we get plans that we're gonna do?
I, I don't disagree, um, I, I wanted to finish the, uh, the process of our, uh, at least our questions, um, okay, so I know that some members, um, ha- have expressed a, uh, a sentiment that they're prepared to vote. I mean, to share my own, I, I feel as though in any ordinary circumstance, we would always, uh, extend the courtesy to any applicant to tighten up plans, especially if we have that information to credibly believe that there might be some errors, just so that we know what we have. This is a last-minute flip of, I, I think, a fairly significant measure, um, it, it de-escalates the impact in one butter and, and arguably, um, uh, creates new impact on another butter, fortunately, both of whom are here, we've heard from them, but I'd like to have the opportunity to s- to nail in the earth where these four corners or more corners will be on the structures, so that we know what we have and give a fair sort of unpacking of the, the process, so with that, I, I, I will entertain um, any member that wishes to make a motion, uh, to allow the applicant to continue uh, for purposes of refining the plans, correcting the break them for us, we could just see if that, uh, we raise that flag if anyone salutes.
I have a motion, I would move that we continue this matter uh, to permit the applicant to submit a complete, accurate application with respect to the project that he proposes to put in force.
Very good.
A motion, sorry, is there a date certain?
Um. How much time would you need?
When, when is your, uh, meeting?
Twenty-eight, yeah, twenty-eight? Twenty-eight, five twenty-eight?
Yeah, that, that's, uh, you would be able to do it, we'll re-get everything back.
I, I honestly can't commit that the civil engineer surveyor would have time to do a plan in one week. Uh, he told us he couldn't this past week, so.
So, um, we could go, the next meeting will be the first meeting in June?
Yeah, the eleventh.
That, that would be acceptable, Chairman, thank you.
If there's a reason that you need additional time through any circumstances or circumstances behind it, you'll just connect with, uh, with Planning Office and, and we'll give any members of the public fair notice that the date may change, but for now, June eleventh will be part of your motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Very good, motion's made, uh, made by.
Of course, yeah. You know, we first saw this, it was first submitted back in January, this was continued several times. And now it's likely to be continued again until June, but I, I just gotta say, on this street, one of the things we got, I think, you know, those massings, and, and it's you can flip it around and do the prettiest plans you want, but at five thousand square feet, I have a hard time, and you need four or five of them, so I'm, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but I hate to see this drag down forever, I mean, you just continue again to try to get something not quite so supersized.
Well, I think giving us an opportunity to go back to the drawing board gives us an opportunity to consider some of those changes.
Great, that, that's music to my ears, thank you. All right, um, I think that's, I think that's a sentiment shared by most of us, if not all of us, for sure, me, um. But thank you for that, uh, so we have a motion made by Mr. Uh, by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Chenon on, uh, the applicant's request to continue to the hearing of June eleventh for purposes of revising and refining uh, the plans, submitting them in ample notice and in advance of the hearing, uh, so that they can be published on the website to the public, uh. Do, uh, calling the role on that motion, Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bla?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Rob, Chen, Eddie, well, yes, that's fine, the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, uh, matter is continued. Uh, for, for your folks that in the room as well as online that, um, participated, uh, thank you for your time, for your comments, and please, uh, if at all possible, uh, try to make yourselves available, we'll continue this hearing on June eleventh. And we thank you, uh, for your patience, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, appreciate your time.
Yep, very good, uh, moving on to the next hearing before us, uh, is the application of Jennifer Answorth, eleven Congress Street, this is a special permit to allow an investor short-term rental unit under use of, uh, one eleven B. Uh, and our presenter this evening is, uh, Jennifer Answorth.
Matt Johnson on behalf of Jennifer, yes, are you? Thank you, um, so yes, thank you, Mr. Fair, uh, members of the ZBA for your attention to this matter, we did are here asking for a special permit under, uh, section five G of the zoning ordinance, um, to allow an investor on short-term rental. Uh, we are aware that the ordinance has changed, and so these have, this, these have a sunset provision for three years, but currently they are, are permitted with a special permit, um, we, we have had a zoning determination that we can have uh, a two-bedroom, four-person occupancy as every zoning determination. Um, and what we are here asking for is conditional approval to allow us to do a three-bedroom, six, uh, six-person, uh, occupancy, uh, special permit, and the basis for that would be that under the uh, section seven A of the zoning ordinance, we are allowed to seek planning board approval to use a municipal lot, there is municipal lot that is under, underutilized in the town, uh, within three hundred square, three hundred feet of my client's property. And that if we were, had permission of planning board to use that, that would provide the additional space necessary under the current zoning ordinance to be entitled to a three-bedroom, six-person, uh, short-term rental, uh. We're okay in either way in terms of what the planning, uh, zoning board prefers in terms of a special permit for, for two bedrooms and four now, or a special permit with three and six with the condition that we only get to do three and six if we come back to you and provide you a copy of the final approved planning board decision that allows us to use the municipal parking lot, uh, whatever is most efficient for the zoning board, um. I, uh, my client has submitted a letter, uh, to the ZBA, uh, we do believe that, uh, their use of the property meets all of the criteria. Uh, the property is located eleven Congress Street, it is in the R-two district. Uh, it is, the owner is River, River Properties LLC, but that is owned by Jennifer and Matthew Answorth, they are the owners. Uh, they are local, they live in Newburyport, they are the ones that manage the property themselves independently and take care of uh, the tenants and maintenance and all of that, that, so this is not an out-of-state situation, uh, where, unlike some of them. Uh, but they definitely, they do not allow parties, that's in part of their rules, uh, through the, they have owned the property since the end of twenty twenty-one, they have rented it's on both a long-term and short-term basis since January of twenty twenty-two. To our knowledge, no police have ever been called or any disturbance at the property, um, they did some analysis of their use of the property and just for the board, now, they, they rented out about fifty-seven percent of the time, so the other forty-three percent of the time, uh, it is not rented. It is a single, uh, single-family, uh, house, um, the picture is in the packet, the, uh, ZBA can see it. Um, it is also rented, um, they also did an analysis of the rentals of where they provide the rentals. And interestingly, they found that while a portion of them, it was no surprise, are vacation renters, are people coming to enjoy, uh, Newburyport, there are also uh, local residents who needed a place for short-term, short-term while their house is being renovated or had flood or damage, and also local workers who needed to be in town for a period of time and they needed a short-term rental, so it's a a relatively diverse, uh, basis for that, um, there is a certified plot plan, my client has paid for the fee for the license. Um, they do have a MASTOR number and, and have had so since they began short-term rentals, they have every effort and desire to comply with any and all licensing and ordinance regulations, uh, which is why they're here seeking the special permit, um. Again, uh, it meets all the requirements, to our knowledge, there has been nothing that would impact in terms of noise, disruption, interference with neighbors or anything that you would think of of some of the um, typical concerns that are raised either at the planning board or zoning board level for short-term rentals, that has not, not happened there. Cautious about who they rent to, uh, they take care of the property, as you can see from the packet. Property is very, very well maintained, it is consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, they have an, they have enough spaces to park in their shared driveway right now to be allowed to, a two, two-bedroom, four-person rental, and again, they would ask, um, a condition of the ZBA to allow them to get planning board approval to, i- if, if the planning board agrees to increase that from a three and to a three-bedroom and six per person, which is a maximum permitted under zoning ordinance. With that, uh, I am happy to take any questions that the ZBA has and or listen to comments from the public.
Very good, thank you, is it Attorney Johnson?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, counsel, um. We will, um, close that portion of the public hearing, uh, please, and go to public comment, we can. Ricardo, um, again, we ask anyone who wishes to comment to kindly try to govern yourselves with, uh, expect toward the time of about two minutes or so, and, uh, this way we can hear from anyone, everyone, uh, anyone in the room which could be heard. Sir.
Hi, uh, Tom Hurley, on a two Congress Street, and my preference would be not to have an Airbnb on the street a lot, it's quite heavenly. So I, I, I'd, I'd rather not expand as well, so that'd be my, my two cents.
Very good, thank you, sir, uh, anyone else?
Yeah, Lori Kelly, also at two Congress Street, um, I just wanna point out that, um, the parking situation has been awful since, um, it's been opened up as an Airbnb. And if we could ensure that people would park down at, um, Cushing, it would certainly help. Um, but, uh, Charlotte, this is next to me, was, uh, right next door, and she's come home and had, uh, residents, renters of the property in her driveway, she's had them using her trash, um, you know, I, it's like if you can ensure that they would park there, it would be one thing, but we can't even ensure that they're gonna use the right trash, never mind the right parking area. Not only that, but I know that, you know, uh, there haven't been huge parties, but let's face it, when people come to town and they're gathering, that means more cars and, you know, there is noise in the backyard, there is groups of people, you know, back there, you know, socializing just about every weekend.
Yeah, it's more, I guess.
Yeah, it's more, I guess, that I, I thought it was going to be, um.
I'm sorry, can you just give us?
I'm sorry, I'm Charlotte, I'm, I apologize. I'm Charlotte, Comperoni, I live just next door. And I met Matthew and his wife, and they're very nice to bring me into their home and explain to me their situation. I, I own a rental property, so I'm very familiar with how stressful that can be, getting good tenants. But I guess I was under the impression that it would be longer term, I don't remember seeing any longer term. People at, at eleven Congress, for me, it's been more two- and three-day stays. And fifty percent of the time, people don't realize that my driveway is not where they need to park. So I'm either blocking before I, you know, have to leave for work and I have to knock on their door to move their car so I can get to work. Or I'm coming home from work, or my kids are trying to come home and we can't let in the driveway. So that, you know, when I have older kids, so, but initially, when I bought the home, you know, we're right next to a playground. That's why we bought the home, so our kids could enjoy the playground, there are people that are adjacent, that have smaller kids. And, you know, and, and I know you've received letters saying they're just not appreciative of this type of situation. When new people are coming in for two and three days days, it's difficult.
Very good, I, thank you for your comments, um, anyone else in the room which could be heard? Anyone behind me? Seeing no hands, uh, we'll go to online, uh, anyone who is following along, uh, via hybrid and Zoom. Kindly, uh, if you just raise your hand, we will open your mic and recognize you, we'll just ask you to kindly give your name and address. And then feel free to share your thoughts, uh, do you have anyone?
Questions, uh, would you like to address the board?
Sure, um, good evening, everyone, my name is Kirsten Rao, I live at ten Congress Street, uh, directly across the street. And I'd like to share my concerns about the proposal to allow a short-term rental in, in our neighborhood. Um, as several of my neighbors said, this is a small, close-knit residential area. Um, and we, we are directly across from a very busy playground where a tremendous number of young families. Um, spend time, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of children on the street. And the majority of the folks who kind of drive in this area are familiar with that, we're local people, we, we kind of know that this is a slow zone. Um, because of the playground, um, and, uh, you know, I have noticed. A, a significant kind of traffic, um, uptick with, with the short-term rental. As well as kind of people who just aren't familiar with the flow of the neighborhood. Um, the increase of people driving on Congress Street who are unfamiliar with the playground, unfamiliar with the high pedestrian nature of the neighborhood. Could pose a safety risk, and I should say, I do have, um, four children, um, for, you know, some of them, which are, are still in elementary school. So, um, this is just not something that we're looking to have in this neighborhood, it is a close community neighborhood. And for these reasons, I believe allowing a short-term rental on our street would negatively impact our community's character and safety.
Very good, um, thank you very much for your comments, uh, anyone else? And online or in the room, yes, sir.
Hi, uh, Jared Gibbons, uh, thirty-four Olive Street, um, I look round the corner, it kind of have a shared interior here in the space. I'm on the other side of the block, um, just an observation, I moved from Ipswich two years ago. We have a short-term rental directly across the street, and even when they weren't out. It's stress of every time you see somebody checking in, it's like, it's been fine for a week, it's just gonna be one. It's just not a pleasant feeling.
Understood, uh, thank you, sir, uh, anyone else in the room or online?
And we do have a, uh, few online, so, uh, Amy Gibson's.
Hey, everybody, it's, uh, Gibbons, um, hi, I, I also am at thirty-four Olive Street. Um, yeah, I wanna just back up, uh, what Jared said, it's, um, it would, of course, be our preference. Not to have a short-term rental in the neighborhood, given that it is quiet and close-knit, um. From past experience, we, uh, basically cannot, uh, we never trust anybody checking into a short-term rental. To be as quiet as maybe previous people have been, when there's nobody on site, it puts the onus on the neighbors. To essentially, um, monitor the situation and, um, take measures to report things if there are issues. Um, my major concern here is that, um. Currently, the Airbnb listing for this property has it listed as a four-bedroom with six guests. So it's already listed essentially, I believe, at what is being sought here. If this is not approved, um, will the, um, owners be required to comply with, um. Basically, the limit that's set for this property.
Very good, uh, thank you for your comments, and we'll be addressing, in case you weren't here during the intro. One of the things I had said, uh, was that during the public comment section, if one chooses to frame their comment in the form of a question. Please don't read a discourtesy from the board if we don't address it directly, but rather, we're listening and we'll very likely adapt that. Um, comment that's in form of a question in, in the, um, questions from the board section. So I just, I just reiterate that in case, uh, you hadn't, uh, been here during that intro, uh, but thank you for your comments. Anyone else online?
Um, Kristen Vakken Vogel.
Yeah, hi, Kristen Bishan Vogel at thirty-sixth Olive Street, um, I think I'm probably far enough away from the actual house. So that I haven't heard any disturbances, but I would defer to those who are closer. Um, I do have a couple questions or concerns in terms of a special permit, um. I wouldn't want a special permit to follow a new owner if it were sold, um, so that would be a concern for me. If it, if it were to follow the house, for example, um, that would be more concerning. Um, I would also hope that, uh, we could potentially revisit, um, any special permit granted periodically. Like maybe every three years or so, uh, to ensure that good management, um, continues, um, and that we have a chance to revisit. That, in case there are, you know, repeated issues, um, it's short of being able to do that. More significant concerns with just, um, being able to grant the permit.
Very good, uh, I, I think I can probably address those two questions right now, um. One is that, uh, any permit granted by this board under the short-term rental unit, uh, special permit does not run with the land. But rather specific to the applicant and the address, and would have to be reapplied for at all criteria, however, they may have been amended over time. Um, uh, would have to be complied with, uh, if the property changed hands. And the second part of your question was about, um, revisitation, and Andy, I believe, since this is an investor unit. This is already on a borrowed timeline and has a finite terminus, which means that it, 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 it has already a prescribed length of time. During which it can even exist under our zoning, this is a grandfather, it's three years from the date of grant.
Correct, so there'd be three years of licensing, but one, you know, a special permit if granted by the board here. But it's a use as investor unit that isn't advertised, uh, over that three-year period, uh, where they're not permitted after that.
Okay, um. And as many in this room or online might, may or may not know, this is, uh, a new ordinance, a, a new amendment to our zoning. And this is actually the first application before this board, um, so, uh, we ask your indulgence to bear with us. As we try methodically, um, step very carefully, um, and thoroughly, and thoughtfully through the, um, the. The, uh, the management of each application as we see it, so, so we are, um. Do we have any?
We did actually have a one other.
Oh, we did, one more question, or however.
One other comment, yeah.
Yeah, one more, one more comment, very good.
Yeah, um, so actually, uh, it's Kitty, uh, did you want to address the board?
Yes, thank you, um, hi, I, um, my name's Mary Creche, I go by Kitty, uh, and I live at, uh, two thirty-two. High Street, uh, so I'm not directly affected by this, I'm in the broader neighborhood, uh, however, this is a procedural issue. Um, I did not realize when I saw the notice of this, that it would be potentially impacting more of the neighborhood. If they were to use parking at the Cushing Park, um, parking lot. So I think that, that should have been notified to a broader audience, it would probably have come to make comments about. Um, the, the impact on the parking, particularly over the winter when we have emergency snow parking, et cetera. Um, so just from a procedural standpoint, I think other people need to know that this is part of the consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jiki, um, I'm gonna let, um, uh, our, uh, planning director, Mr. Port, address that question for you before we move on.
Sure, and it's a worthwhile consideration, I don't think we need to worry about re-noticing this, cuz it's not really the subject matter or jurisdiction of this board. To make the determination of use of public parking, um, however, I know that was mentioned during the presentation that that might be of interest to the applicant. I don't think that anybody here should be proceeding with the assumption that that's a path that would be viable, in my view, um, to, to be able to get a permit. Or, uh, approval for use of the city lot for quasi-commercial use here, um, I'll just throw that out there. So, that being said, um, that may, it, it wouldn't necessarily be added to this form anyway, even if that were to.
That would be a planning board, um, jurisdictional.
They have the latitude to grant permits, uh, for use of, of some public parking, but I'm not convinced of that.
So, so, Mr. Piquetti, if, uh, what Mr. Port, I believe, is saying without, I don't mean to presume to reframe anything he said, but. Um, to the extent to which anyone may need to or wish to lean upon parking that they do not possess and control on-site. For example, in a circumstance where someone wishes to use public parking or parking lot parking. That matter is a separate question, a separate evaluation, and before a separate board, the planning board. Uh, and it is by no means any guarantee here, even if this board were to act favorably on any short-term rental unit application. Uh, does not place any additional weight on whether that same applicant would prevail in the second tier of that question. Uh, before, uh, the planning board as to the use of other parking, and, uh, I, I don't, I hope that is helpful, um.
Yes, thank you.
Very good, all right, uh, any other questions online?
There, uh, one other person, uh, Nicole Chabot.
Very good, uh, Ms. Ms. Chabot, you, uh, you have the mic, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Nicole Chabot, and I'm here with my husband, Jamie Chabot, and we live at four Congress Street. Directly across from eleven Congress Street.
So, um, we have seen since this house became a short-term rental, maybe two or three years ago, I'm not exactly sure. That our neighborhood dynamics have changed, um, you know, negatively, uh, what we were afraid of. And that's one of the reasons why this is, um, the zoning was changed in Newburyport to avoid these kind of situations downtown. In the residential area, and, um, we've seen like parking, um, you know, all over the place. And this house is, um, it seems like there are a lot more people staying in this house than, um. That are supposed to be, and then many more cars and, and cars parked on our street, and just wanna. They also wrote an email, so I'm not sure if that was received or not, but the, um. You know, this is gonna continue to, every, you know, week, there's different people, different parking, and we have to sort of police that as neighbors. And that's not what we moved to downtown Newburyport, uh, in a residential area to be doing. So we're, um, firmly against this ordinance.
Very good, uh, thank you, Mr. Chabot, and, and also, just for the record, we do have your, um, email to, um, to the, uh, planning office. Dated May thirteenth, actually, that would be, uh, Monday at eight twenty-three P M, so we, we do have your comments, you know. Very good, uh, any other?
Thank you.
Thank you both, uh, any other comments? Seeing no other hands, anyone else in the room? Seeing no hands, all right, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to questions from the board, beginning with Mister Swan.
Um, yeah, um. Well, we've heard a lot of comments tonight from different, um, people in the neighborhood, um. In addition, uh, online, many, three different people who live on the backstreet submitted, uh. Comments as well, and what's, the thing that struck me about all three of their letters was they were talking about the noise in the backyard. Um, and yet, when I go to the website for the, this rental. It says that quiet times are to be deserved, observed in between eight P M and eight A M, conversation must have been kept at an intimate level in the outdoor space. Et cetera, um, I guess, in fact, there it is, it is.
So, Andy, what, what's the, uh? What's the name of the? Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I believe we got letters from people at five, seven, and nine, that's true. Sorry.
There is a back.
Yeah, there is a back, yeah. Yeah, all right, yeah, I live near back. Uh, anyway, this, this is on the website for the rental unit, and it says quiet times need to be observed. They're between eight A M, eight P M, eight A M, and you can only have intimate levels of conversation in the outdoor space. So I'm trying to understand how three letters from Beckstreet came in, saying there's loud noise coming from the back of the night. Um, I, I guess my question is, if we were to grant you a special permit. Would, could there be a condition which basically says what's on your letter here, that it has to be quiet and everything? And the level of conversation has to be. In, in intimate level of conversation. Is that something the applicant would find, uh, a reasonable thing for us to include in any approval?
Uh, we're, we're okay working through reasonable conditions, we even talked about the potential of putting like a noise meter in. So there could be some data associated with respect to people's concern, I will note that the ordinance says excessive noise. I mean, it is a close-knit community of small, you know, the houses are not that far apart from, so there's a certain level of what is, yeah, even intimate. It can be, it, noise travels, I mean, and we, you know, the next step, we even say it's best used for peace and relaxation. Neighborhood is very close, the voice carries, so be respectful, so we are trying our best to do that, but, you know, you can also have a loud neighbor who owns her house. And there's not, yeah, nothing anybody can do about it, so, but we are, we are willing to try to take steps and, and address reasonable conditions. I just struggle a little bit with how we do it in a way that's somewhat objective enough to measure so that we're not, not back here. Every month fighting over whether that was excessive or not excessive, but I understand, we understand ZBA's point, and we, we take the concern seriously. As you've noted from our, our materials, we're not, we, we want this to be peaceful, and we recognize the neighbors around. We do not wanna disrupt the neighbors cuz they live there too, and so we're, we're happy to try to find some accommodation. But as, as the board, board chair alluded to, this is the first pass with this ordinance and implement, implementing it. So we're struggling with that piece a little bit ourselves.
The other thing is, you're, you're, um, yeah, this page here, it says, uh, four, four bedrooms, um. I mean, you, we can only grant a two-bedroom, uh, approval, so I would assume whatever. If we were to grant something, would sue your advertising would then reflect that?
Yes, it would have to.
Um. Yeah, sorry, if it's right in the chat.
Yes, that's just in light of that somewhat related question, just to understand correctly, uh, because the ad is listing if the entire home is available for the rental. If it has four bedrooms in it, but only two of the bedrooms are being made available, are the other two bedrooms being, what is the assumption about the other two bedrooms in that?
I think, I, 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 I guess the way I would, I understand the point, but I guess the way I think that, 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 that issue is addressed is by the occupancy limit. Because it's, it's two bedrooms and four people, right, so I mean, I think that's the way that has to be addressed. I mean, I'm not sure that the ZBA cares if one person sleeps in all four beds, you know, so long as it's a max number of four. Cuz as I read the ordinance, that's, it's a bedroom limit, but it's also an occupancy limit.
Is it not, I thought it was just a bedroom.
Uh, yeah, I believe that both are playing a role there, I, the reason I asked the question is, it would seem to me that, um, again, I have to be honest, again, that my, my recollection. When the ordinance is written here is that, in effect, you'd have two bedrooms that effectively couldn't be used, uh, someone's saying that. Because you've got that limit based on both bedrooms and on, uh, persons.
But that's a little bit of a proxy like they use for septic loading of like bedrooms as a proxy. It really seems to me to be the impetus behind it would be the number of people, in, in my opinion, at least, what the, what the, uh. You know, the city was striving for in terms of the limitations they wanted to put up.
There's a difference between, um, you know. Mother and a father and two kids or two couples, and having four, you know, the folks on a, you know, uh.
I, 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 I hear you.
Weekend, you will.
I hear you on that, but I think there's some fair housing and just sort of anti-discrimination, uh, concerns that the board would be facing if they were. Going to then sort of mandate what class of people could be.
What class, the mandate is two bedrooms, so if the thing has four bedrooms, and it's kind of.
But it's actually two bedrooms or four people, I mean, that's the limit, so I mean, it, it, there's two of them that have to be read together, as I understand.
The law doesn't say just four people, it says two bedrooms and four people. You have to realize, this is the first one.
Well, no, no, I, I, I hear you. Right, I don't know, I, I, I hear you, I mean, and some of this is, you know, we've all been like, legislation ordinance gets passed. And then rubber meets the road, cuz you guys, you guys have to implement them, so we, we get the point, but I, it just seems like, I mean. You know, I, I don't know what the workaround is. You know, I, I don't know what the workaround is for that, you know, close the door to two bedrooms or I.
Can discuss it when they're in their time. Um, I, I think I go back to the parking. I just want to make sure I understand the parking. So tonight we're looking at a proposal with two bedrooms and four occupants. Uh, using the existing parking that, and what is the existing parking? I've heard that people are parking in the neighbors' parking lot. Here, here's a nice map. So where can you, is there any parking on site in the yellow box?
Let it pretty well show them where the parking is.
Well, I mean, it's actually shared driveway. Deeded to the new properties here. Um, and you know, previous owners, uh, would share the driveway, you know, especially if it was a snowstorm, something like that, but. Uh, what we chose to do was to offer it to this, uh, couple here, so that they are able to remove two cars off the street and use it in. So that that get eliminated some of the parking. And we asked that our guests only park one car out front, and we have a map that is visible in the. Uh, listing description. Previously, before the. This ZB A meeting, it would be something that I would send, so it wasn't included in the description or in the listing photos, but it is now. And it highlights that there's no parking in front of any of these homes that is not permitted. That, you know, with, they can park there. There's a home right here that, um, is unoccupied. It has been for a very long time. Um, I hear from the neighbors that he gave him tons of works on it. Um, so I did say, you can park there. In fact. Parking it can be difficult in this neighborhood because I go to it all the time, you know, when people are there and when people aren't there. And they're picking up the garbage, and they're checking in, and they're doing, I shovel, huh, I shovel all the way up to there. So I'm aware of what the parking situation was, and it's often difficult for me to park. Yeah, I ended up generally parking right there. There's a big tree, and that's where I park. And then I ask the guests, they have more cars to park.
So rather than people with shared driveway, which is the advantage of parkour, and the people that previously parked their cars. We actually give that to the neighbors to park their cars in that shared driveway and have them for the last. Two years, and we were challenged with pulling up the neighbors' parking in front of each other's homes on progress, but those were in that Charlotte, it's like having.
I'm on the opposite side of the house, and I find people are parking in that driveway all the time.
If I, um, if I might, um, and thank you, sir, uh, could you just give, I know, we presume. We, we just want to make sure that for the right letting you know some of them. Um, okay, and thank you for taking a moment. I'm looking at the listing as well, and I see the, um. Uh, the photo that you highlight the parking. It looks like those are, the, the green, if, if this is what I'm looking at, I'm on the clock. Is that, is that green, the green boxes, is that the, um?
Preferred parking for one car.
It looks like, is it two spaces or is it one space?
Well, it's thirty-eight feet back.
So it's, you have, um, if I might. If I might just preempt from with a quick question. Do you, uh, you have house rooms beyond just the, uh, the outlines that are on the list and give up the publisher, house rooms beyond that?
Yes, every time.
Yes. And the other question was, um, with respect to parking. Um, you said you send this out to guests beforehand?
Yes.
Okay.
We did, and now it's a part of the actual listing photos that you viewed before you booked it, so they can see that parking, where the parking.
And they receive it when they book now as well as much of the changes in the platform. Very good for them.
But we, you know, it's a tight area, so that's one of the reasons we said we were going to look to get relief if, again, assuming the planning board gives it, that guaranteed. We allow for that lot because that would also benefit the neighborhood generally in terms of congestion.
So, um, and I'll just, I'll leave this spot before we continue with, um, with Mr. Sloan's questions, if any of you left, and then we'll go through the rest of the board. And the extent to which.
Something about you, because this is your first one, and I know you understand.
Sorry, and if I, I will, I want, I want to indulge that, but just if you bear with me just a moment, I say that respectfully. The, um, to the extent to which this board were to entertain granting these sorts of permits, I, I believe that certainly it's within our, um, within our discretion and perhaps, perhaps within. Good wisdom to try to address concerns that we know about, uh, things that are curable or at least monitorable like sound. Because there are devices and technology that would allow any host to monitor decibels and set a trigger, which is a great, you know, um. Preemptive type of condition, uh, as well as parking, as well as application of parking. There is the power, our, our board has the power to place conditions which become more restrictive than what might otherwise be the case under any, um, you know, uh, short-term rental platform. Whether it's Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway, uh, La Casa, whomever, or, or Independence. So I think that that, those are the tools within our discretion, and I say this to my colleagues. Um, so we may undertake to do any or all of those at any given point in time to try to find paths. To, um, address concerns that we know about, assuming that the board's even inclined to grant. But, Mr. Anderson, uh, you, you were commenting, and then I want to continue.
Yeah, I mean, we talk about noise disturbance, which is very disturbing because, you know. I am a resident of, you know, this phone happened fourteen years before, and I have a loud name. I always will have a loud name because that's who they are, and I'm okay with that. But in reality, you're going to be going through these and approving these or not proving these accordingly. There is a software device, and Jennifer can share the material with you, we'll happen to put in place. Four minutes. It will do more than just sound. It will actually look for cigarette smoke as well, and it'll actually track and detect how many people are wandering around the house. Um, by the sensor on, and they're legal, they're legal, and they're being used in many states and many protocols for the Airbnb's to manage and help. Um, another note is to understand that the type of insurance you have down on these properties is very expensive, and it's very clear that that is not being had here to. Um, in accordance with the ordinance, because you're going to let owner-occupied should have any insurance, which by ways is completely insane because. They will never pay out if you've rented your property in any shape if you don't have the correct insurance on your property, which I do have the correct insurance on that for my process. And I know you understand this process, but it's very important to understand the effort and the time it goes in to running an operational, making it work smoothly, including actually having relationships with our neighbors like Charlotte. And the others who spoke on the phone, trying to make sure that. We mitigate any of the risks. They have our cell phone, we do have our numbers before the same town, or we would address any issues, and we've actually never received a complaint apart from a question from the neighbor about. Where people park, and that led to the fact that we actually provide our parking space to our neighbor. So that there is no dispute, and they actually receive benefit from that rather than having to challenge. Under the name, but I do believe this device, we share the document, you should look at it, it's very valuable to the future ones.
Maybe I should get your number again. I hope I don't have it.
Okay, yeah, that's also very helpful in shared circumstances. Uh, okay, continue. Thank you for that, and, uh. And yes, non-video, non-invasive, non-violative privacy technology that's still, um, very useful in detecting. Departures from walls, things that relate to impacts. We want to hear about all of that, um. And we may undertake to make those conditions, but, uh, Mr., do you have any further questions?
I just want a little comment, and thinking about my questions and some of the answers, the thing about two bedrooms. And two occupants, my thing about the parking, how high is it? I think you kind of see the two bedrooms as being important to keeping down more vehicles that are coming to visit. Uh, and so I, I think that is very important to me, and it's as part of the criteria here. Anyway, I have no questions. I'll be able.
Very good. Uh, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Yeah, so what happens, um, attorney Johnson, in the situation where you have five people or six people in the. The Airbnb or VRBO, whoever, whoever it is, the short-term rental unit, and the little, little device goes off and. These guys come and show up, and then the people in the, in the, uh, in the house say, well. There's fair housing laws and, and the like, you know, we, we don't have to leave. Is that, is that a, a risk? Does that put, pit the town against the owners? You know, what do we do with that? Because you brought that up, so.
Well, I brought it up, and just be clear, only in the context of picking and choosing who could occupy the property. I understand.
But isn't that then picking and choosing in that context?
No, because that's a neutral, that's a neutral both class of race and base, not, it's neutral to all of those things. And all you're doing is setting parameters and say noise, and that is neutrally applied across the spectrum, so there would be no fair housing or implication.
My hypothetical is that there are five or six people in the house, and someone has to go and say, hey, you two have to.
I mean, the ZB A and the code enforcement are already have that enforcement power, I believe, under the zoning ordinance, because zoning ordinance sets limitations. So I mean, I think, I don't say that that. I don't, I don't see that it could be, I don't see how my client could have more people than was permitted and then raise a defense of fair housing. Because they violate, you know, they, they did some of the ordinance. I just don't see that happen. I just, I, I understand your point. I, I appreciate the question, but. It if, you know, whatever the board, they have to abide by whatever the board, board does, and if they, you know, the, if they have more than are allowed there, then people can't stay there.
That's, I, I'll just, can we just interject? I happen to know a bit about this as well, I'll share it for what it's worth, but with these platforms, and I, and I've seen this listing. Um, every host has the power, and almost every host does, require guests to register, um, every guest that's there. And it's for this very purpose because no tenancy is created in a short-term rental unit of less than thirty days. It is rather a license, which means that if the rules under that license, which is the rental agreement, uh, by virtue of the host. And guest relationship through a platform or independently, um, if a guest's occupancy under that agreement is violating, is violated of the terms, like they have more people than they registered. There are more people than are supposed to be there, um, a, a host has the ability to take action to. To, to remove them, to cancel their, you know, to cancel their occupancy. Um, I imagine in the extreme hypothetical, that would include, though it would be extreme, um. Having s- law enforcement help, my, although I can imagine that would actually be the case. These aren't folks typically looking for. Uh, you know, a beef with the law, you know, looking for like, you know, smores and a barbecue or what have you, but that being the case, it's a fair legal question that I, I toss a move myself.
But I, I think it's a license, it's only a license agreement. It does not create a tenancy.
But as long as you.
I understand that, yeah.
So I guess, I guess, moving back here, what was the purpose of the initial comment regarding, uh? Fair housing violation?
That was, again, back to my point, that was only because there seemed to be a discussion of like what type of people could co- count as the four. That was only the context of what I was talking about. Yeah, exactly. That was my only, only context. That was.
I, I. Anything else, Mr. Sloan? No, I don't. I think we're there. Uh, Mr. Better?
Yeah, a few questions. Uh. Who, um? Do you, where do you live?
I live in the report over by Motzy, Cherry Hall.
And I didn't look at your, uh, brochure, but is there a method by which the neighbors could call you to complain about noises, some, I mean, is there a mechanism? Whereby somebody who has a good faith concern about what's going on can contact you? Or somebody else that you hire as a manager of this property?
Well, I mean, the first thing that we'd like to say is that, like, we, you know, um, as residents of Newburyport, we, we really respect the.
I understand, but. I got you.
Yeah.
Could you try to really answer that question? It's important.
So when we, when we, when we first listed it two years ago, we went around and contacted all the neighbors, um, invited them to come over to see what we're doing, answer any questions, talk about what. What we saw happening and give them our phone number, checked in with them. I'm there, the strong presence there. I don't know people on Buck Street. I know people right up front. It's something that we're definitely willing to. And I won't even say willing, I mean, we want to, we want to be a good part of this neighborhood and to make it a work in progress and help.
Well, it makes sense, wouldn't it? That, that should be a, that should be a mechanism whereby neighbors who have a good faith complaint about what's going on can contact you. Or somebody who's responsible for dealing with that up, down, or the cross eye.
We're, 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 we're happy to have a number publicly available to the community, and on top of that, we don't have a platform, you can actually go on, anybody can go on it and contact us.
When any time. In fairness. But in fairness, I think that that's for guests, uh, host interaction, for just folks that aren't on any platform.
But it is used, it is used by people for that purpose.
But it would, it, it will be, it will be easier, uh, because the licensing process, which is the next step, would require a public registration. So you, any member of the public need only call, um, the planning office, I'm sorry to say, that there was any, all, 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 you know, roads lead to Rome, so to speak, so any, any, any contact.
I know, I'm like two in the morning. This is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I didn't know, but my point is that that information is going to be public record.
Right.
And that means that anyone would be able to access it, as I think is probably a good thing, but, um, is, and is that true? Is that the case? Did I get that right?
Yeah, yeah, we took Greg's point, perhaps.
You're not going to be there two o'clock in the morning.
Well, no, do I agree with both the chair, but I also agree with what Greg, I think, might be going, which is the fact that we still be reliant on, say, the police department to solve our original complaints and whatnot, to have a documented record of what might have happened, so.
Very good.
I, I am just. Here's my point, and I think you can agree with me. I think you're running a commercial enterprise here. And if there is a problem, there should be a way to communicate with you or somebody you have retained. To address it, no matter what time. That's kind of where I'm, I don't mind if colleagues agree with that, but. You know, this is, this is not, in my mind, you know, this is, you know, this is a commercial undertaking. You have to have responsibility for twenty-four cell, and so. Fair enough, I understand, but you can understand where I'm coming from, and what kind of condition I might want, but we understand.
Very question, by the way, when you roll on these properties on the platform, you actually have to be available to respond to concerns time range as well, and it affects you as. A host and who you are, they have to follow the guests as well, in the same house, so.
I know, but you're not. I get your point. I appreciate your, well, comments, I really do.
Okay, uh. Talk to me about, I mean, there are other, say, I mean, I, I suppose you have smoke detectors in this structure and all of those kinds of things, which meet. What, enhanced conditions or just a residential conditions requirements? If you can answer that, I don't.
I don't know what enhanced means, and that's.
More than one, more than two, more than what you're required if you were a resident.
Well, I mean, we, there. I, I still don't really understand.
Do you have a smoke detector in every bedroom, for example?
Yeah, we fully comply.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Um. Talk to me about the insurance. What's the level of insurance you have?
I don't, I mean, I have the insurance policy with me here. I don't know if it adds all the details into it, but.
I'd like to know how much it is.
How much it is?
What coverage is?
Um.
Well, you, uh, you can hand it up to.
Yeah.
I just want to make, I just, before you hand it, I just want to, I hadn't seen it. I just want to make sure there's no. Uh, social security number.
I don't want to look at it. I just, I would accept your, that's what the flip levels and policy names are.
Set for the vacation. Well, I don't see where it says. You say the policy number, I don't see the limits. You happen to know? We can, we can provide it.
Write that information.
Sure. Yeah, it's.
Commercial lines policy should also have, um, liability coverage, which is something that a residential policy.
Well, I, I mean, I can't tell you that that way. It refers to the fact that it's a location rental policy, so it's not a standard homeowner policy.
Uh, that's what most people aren't doing, but they're going to start to.
Right.
Very good. Okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Miller. Typically, and I know, I'm not trying to trick you here, but typically, when you have, uh. Two bedrooms, are, are you getting two guests? Are you getting four guests? Or what's the tip? If you could kind of. Give a typical perspective on that. Is it typically just two people, one in each room, or does it vary? Is it difficult to?
We have a wide range, I would really have to say. I mean, we have, we have, uh. We, we have, as Matthew had said, we have some workers who come, and they're single men that are coming to perform work on the roads, and it's one of the places that they can accommodate them, and they do choose to sleep in separate beds, which are in separate bedrooms rather than being. Mental beds in one bedroom. But, um, we have families, we have people that are visiting family, they're here for business openings, they're here to care for six relatives, they're here to celebrate the birth of babies. And we're just longtime friends. I mean, I get that a lot. We started tracking them, asking people if they might share an application. We do have, uh, families, uh, but also a lot of the time we just get, uh, you know, parents and maybe one or two adult children. They just want to spend some time in Newburyport, and they want to be able to walk downtown, and it's. And they wanna be able to walk downtown and it's appealing because it's, it's close to that, so. They, they do a wide range.
I got you. Thank you so much.
And Newburyport residents who experience things like pipes bursting. They need, basically, say, a lot of renovations.
Do these people have access to your kitchen, I presume?
Yes.
Do they use the kind of kitchen regularly to, to your experience?
Uh, I'm not too sure how often they do. I mean, like, some people do, but, uh, you know, the workers do, for examples. But they're only there two days. They really don't, I come guessing, not bringing all these groceries to cook. And then a lot of them are just going to the restaurants and that's like sort of their plan is to go to restaurants and come back and. Or they're going to an event where there's food and then they come back and that's it.
Just trying to guide you parking one more time. I'm confused. If there are four guests. Where will those four cars park?
Four cars?
Yeah.
I mean.
That's what, that would be the max.
So like, you know, I, we just started collecting data and something that we're working on, we had another property in Salisbury, which. Was on sheet parking. It also did not have parking. And it was something that we would put a notice in it that would say that this is belonging to that property. So it was identifiable to other people. Um, that'd be one thing. We haven't had more people. I do ask people and it's something that I'm willing to do. That they would say how many cars in advance that they do have and that they would have to agree that they're going to park it in these locations prior to it being accepted, sort of.
One of our properties would be limited to, uh, two cars for parking in front of the home. So it's easy to set it up. In a small public park.
Yeah.
But I very rarely hear or see.
Yeah, we weren't really aware and we, and like, you know, we, we know the people in the neighborhood and, um, you know, we wanna be good neighbors to them. It's very important to us, which is why we, we talk to them in person. So we want to work on it with them and everybody.
So, we're good. Um, Mr. Good.
I guess my, my question, this is our first one. We're just trying to get our arms around this. It are. If you were to meet all the regulations through, you know, whatever we say here and then we're onto license. You, are you, you're, you're basically in for the two bedroom, four, four people. But you're looking for us to. Make it so you can do three bedroom, six people.
Either one of, one of both, if, if we qualify now, we need planning board approval. So like, we, we're not pretending that we have that. Nor are we suggesting that we have that. So it could either be conditioned on us presenting that to you. And obviously we'd be subject to the limitation of the two to four until we prove that, or we could just come back. If the, if the board, I mean, it's a new ordinance, so it's a little unclear to figure out what the process is, or if we get the planning board approval, come back and request. You know, assuming you give us a special permit tonight, come back and say, we now have the planning board approval. We qualify for the. We have the parking for three, so we would like to do, change it.
So here's the thing, right? I, I see the listing and then I, I hear all the discussion and then it occurs to me. Are you here asking to do three bedroom and six people because I'm, I'm looking at your parking situation? And I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to put all these factors together. I'm hearing the neighbors. Um, I, I, I think you're asking for something, but I'm not sure you're asking for it. And I'm trying to understand, what's the end game here for you? Are you, is, are you looking for approval for three bedroom, six people? Is that what you've been doing every day until this ordinance came along?
That would, that would be, cause that's a full extent prohibited by the current ordinance. That would be the, that would be the ultimate goal if we're allowed, if we can. Establish with the planning board, we have parking, but again, this board doesn't decide that issue. That's a, that's gonna be a planning board issue.
I, I totally understand. I, I was just trying to clear that here.
It is a big enough property to be able to do the three and the six comfortably i- in our opinion. And so if we're permitted.
Yeah.
That would be what we do, but, but that's to be determined.
Understood, understood. All right. Thank you.
Anything further? Very good.
That was my biggest question. I've been asking for three, six, and does the board have the latitude to approve the three, six?
Um, I, I would say that, well, I think we mechanically, mechanically write language to accomplish that, you know, pending plainboard review. Of something like that. Again, I would be cautious about, uh, particularly applicant, assuming that they could get that. Accomplishment of the planning board granting a special permit for the use of pushing park. For parking of this quasi-commercial use. So just wanted to make that clear that I'm not confident that that would pan out. Um, but as far as crafting language to say, you know, you're authorized for two and four people, two better than four people, up to three with six people. If, you know, up to about a plenty more people craft language that effect.
Okay.
And my only point on that one just would be i- is that. My read of the ordinance, and you guys tell me if I'm wrong, would be that. From my client's perspective, the only difference between the two, four approval and the three, six approval is whether we can. Have the extra parking. So it would seem to be, that would be a fair condition to impose because it's not as if. We'd need to go back to square one relative to all the other aspects of this special permit process. The only issue would be, do we now have enough parking? To qualify for the three for six. That's why we suggested potentially the condition. I understand planning director's point, but that's why. That's why we made that.
Thing too, to that question, like, hopefully too, which was just that we do rent it for thirty-one days. Uh, in the winter sometimes. And so I, I'm not sure what. You know, the neighborhood would feel about that because is there a limitation to the parking? If it's a month, month rental, which we have done numerous times.
It, it's no longer a short term rental unit under the definition of a statute that enables our ordinance, which is the state statute. It's twenty, it'd be thirty days or twenty-nine days.
Sometimes it will be, you know, it could be thirty-one days and sometimes it could be less, so.
Different parking obligations if it's.
Or people who come, as I said, people are visiting people in Newburyport who might come over as well.
We need to be aware of this because we moved this to a hotel rental, decided right at the four, 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 five, six cars. There are the restrictions on hotel rentals. We don't have to do that, right? We're fifty percent off it's a year, giving the reduction of. And trying to get them off it.
So, um, okay, um, anything further? And did you have any other questions?
I, I just wanted to clarify, it sounds like we could approve two, four with the condition to go to three, six. Should the planning board allow a third parking upside?
Right, that, that would be, I, I would agree with that. It should be here, you know, the rest of our columns, but I think that the way the ordinance is written. It, it, it's a fair and, and kind of logical interpretation that we can grant to the extent of our purview of our authority. Um, however, if this applicant should, with that in hand, go to the planning board and get. The additional approval for offsite parking, then it automatically triggers their ability to go to the. The next and final terminus of that, you know, expanded rate range, which would be the additional bedroom. And the additional park with the additional parking. And we, and we don't have any power to, we don't, we, we really don't need to make a condition. Um, I don't think, but we fully, just out of, just out of.
You're saying if we approve two, four, and then they go to the planning board and ask for off-street. Offsite parking, they automatically go to three, six?
Well, I think that if we condition it that they can, then they do. If they don't, then that means that we are setting ourselves up for, for a duplication. A redundancy of applications before this board, because that would mean that almost anybody in that circumstance, in this. You know, limited window circumstance of an investor unit for the three years towards which it's relevant, uh, would have then come back to us. You know, which would mean that these applications would be double impact, whi- which may be the only path. I, I don't know. It's just. We should be aware of it. It's a procedural impact that would mean that they would leave here with a permission slip for. The limit of our jurisdiction. They would then go to the planning board. They would get the, you know, the, the blessing of the planning board. Uh, in, in that instance, and get the ability to have the expanded parking. And then with that in hand, they would come back to us. With that second permission. So they can say, we, we now like. I think, I think it's not in our.
Just give them the three, six.
It's, it's just a, it's a conditionality in language so that we have expressed our, our sort of collective intent. For, for all those that may look upon it, so we don't have to revisit it. Proper, you know, again, I think that it would create a lot of tax on our ability to get through these.
Right. So, Andy, isn't it just a grant of the application then, and it's subject to them meeting the parking requirement, which they either can or can't do?
It is, it is, I guess, why.
Without planning board approval to get to that higher level.
Right. I guess I was just contemplating explicit language in a special condition based on this section. I was assuming explicit language to make it very, you know, unambiguous and clear to everybody.
Only in the event that.
Only in the event that the planning board grants it is that additional.
That's what we understood.
Okay, so if, if we, we would have to, we, we would be crafting that for the first time, but whatever we do here and now is likely what will be. Incumbent upon us to do every time. So we should be thoughtful about that.
I, I have one other question, if I might.
Yeah, sure.
You know, this is the first time through for us. And so we asked our, our.
Us too.
Our city's, yeah. Our city's lawyer, how do we deal with these things? Uh, one of these they said was. You know, if there's been complaints from the neighbors to the zoning enforcement officer or to the police, then you really need to take that into consideration. So I basically, I guess I don't ask you, I will ask the, this, for the zoning enforcement officer over here. Have there been any complaints from the neighborhood about this?
To my understanding, the zoning administrator has not received any complaints related to this particular unit. Uh, and, and we, and she checked with the police department, not having you there, that she could afford to, uh, and say, you know, here's evidence of the complaints that have been made previously for this particular. S P R U operation or there have been, I guess, others, but that's for the case, but not necessarily.
Okay, so there have been no complaints to date. We can't take that into consideration for us, but don't these folks have to go for annual licensing?
That's correct. And I think that, that I'll, I have to leave it to the city council, but I think in the regulatory scheme here, the assumption was that the use is being addressed here. But primarily the nuisance type issues are being addressed in the licensing process.
Yeah.
And, and of course, in granting a license, the board have to determine if there weren't already some sort of history or problems here. But also more importantly, if an operation is underway and has a license, they would pull that license if someone has, you know.
So just so I understand, if, if I'm a neighbor who have to come to the meeting and, and I, you know, like. If we grant this thing and three months from now, there's all these problems. If the neighbors were to complain to your office, to the zoning enforcement officer or to the police. There would be a record of problems. And then the, when they go for their annuals licensing review, those would be considered.
Correct. Those would be brought to, uh, the license commission. The one thing I've noticed, the licensing process doesn't have a butters notice in the same way that the special permit does.
They don't, you don't get a letter.
You don't get a letter saying the license commission will be looking at the application on such a date. You'll be able to, you'll be able to see on the, you know, the. Application materials. And we don't actually oversee that forward to be with our office. Um, it's, it's another board, but, uh, but typically those application materials will also would be able to be determined. You know, do that online portal, but, um, we're not overseeing that. It's, it's sort of evolution.
Will you have the opportunity to take the complaints that come to your office?
That's correct.
Forward them?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a, there's a window here for people. If this, if this goes off the rails. It's a safety net, a safety net, if you want. Anyway, I just, thank you.
Is there a, can I ask a follow up question on that to you, Andy? Is there a process whereby the, a granted license can be revoked?
Yes, yeah, okay. Yes, and yes, and that's, I know it's a three stretch route, but basically if, if the license commission got a couple of complaints that are coming in, they've been verified. They have the option to pull their license and say, you're all over operating in your faith, um, creating a nuisance, but they weren't, you know, but the, you know, the background is there.
Not unlike liquor licensing, which is the same board.
Right.
In compliance with module licenses, like complaints of TV.
But it's two, I mean, it's kind of a dual track by regulatory scheme. All of the enforcement language. That is in the licensing.
Yeah.
Section of the ordinance.
They have the police box.
Yeah.
Um, again, I was referring to board, I, you know, whoever, uh, you go with the occasion, but I just thought it might be worthwhile, both for the applicant to clarify and for the board to be of an understanding and everything in the room to understand. Um, we have a, an advertisement, right, that's showing that there are four bedrooms, that are the whole house and four bedrooms are available. But there are two bedrooms that are being referenced here in this application, just to make sure there's clarity and, and not sort of confusion down the road. What is going on? Great. And what is the approval being granted for you? Are you a part of that interior of the house? And is that, are you, you're suggesting that the other bedrooms would still be available for renters? Even though the ordinance would contemplate that these bedrooms being available, I just want to understand. I, I wasn't privy to your direct discussions with the zoning administrator, but. Trying to understand, um, what, what you're.
I just, I, 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 I feel like this, I mean, candidly, I feel like this is a weakness in the ordinance in terms of. How the hell you manage that piece of it, because it's a four bedroom house. I mean, obviously our client, my clients will abide by whatever restrictions. Two bedroom, four, but I like, I don't know that they're like, I mean, what does that mean this? You, you come in, you come in and two people, you know, they get to pick two bedrooms and that's it. And they'll get to use the other two bedrooms. I mean, I think it just. You gotta have to sort of work that way and we would have to advertise it as only two bedroom.
But the, the reason I point that is only because the way that the ordinance works is that's essentially what it's saying. So in essence, I, it would seem to me that, you know, I, I'm not suggesting it's easy to. That he is a practical condition to enforce. Um, but that is essentially how the ordinance works. He wouldn't necessarily have legal permission to use the other two bedrooms. The way that that provision is, is written.
I, just, just to be clear, are you gonna tell me that, you know, the city of Newport is gonna pick and choose what bedrooms? I mean, my point is, you know, you gotta use two.
I don't, I didn't establish.
But I'm, but my point is it can't be like two and these are the only, I mean, they have to use two, but if there's four ones, they can only use two.
No, but the reason I bring that up is because.
Or you guys are gonna decide.
I'm not saying we are, but still we have that authority.
But my point, but so you're gonna go in a house and say this bedroom and this bedroom? I mean, come on.
Could say that you, you were permitted as, as an S T, as a short term rental unit for bedroom A and bedroom B.
But it doesn't say in the ordinance that you get to pick the bedroom.
Say it doesn't.
Yeah, but the scope of your authority is, is limited by the ordinance.
Let's, let me, I, let me respectfully counsel. I know the, the last, the last thing anyone really needs is a roomful of lawyers. Unfortunately, many of us are, so, so I, I will say though, that in the spirit of, yeah, in the spirit of all of, um, those discussions, I think. Fair minds in good faith are endeavoring to try to find a, a logical, credible and, and, uh. Uh, you know, thoughtful path forward. Uh, but whatever we do now, I believe that we're being granular because I feel, you know. I believe we all feel we, we kind of need to, but I, I wanna move this along, uh, because we have to. So the, um, we left off with, uh, uh, questions and we've gone through everyone's questions.
Missed it here. Can I just?
Yeah.
Well, just one point that really is not about thi- this applicant, just in general.
Okay.
Whatever we deliver to the planning board, there needs to be some thought behind it.
Of course.
Okay, and, and so I know we're not supposed to be deciding on the parking. But this residence does not have any parking. It's all public parking. And, and again, that's a planning board's job to say that, you know what, the plant, the parking on the streets is everybody, every taxpayer is parking. But I'm just saying that our sort of connection to the planning board is giving, is giving them something. That I hope they look at and say, well, this is thoughtful, um, from what was presented to that, them. Versus, oh, why did they send this to us? We could ne- never prove that because they don't have X, Y, or Z. We're getting into this picking, picking bedrooms or.
Yeah, I, I, I want us to be.
Parking.
Let us, let us not, let's not use the force, you know, among the trees, right?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, this is, this is an endeavor for us to simply act within the purview of our authority, which is limited in scope. And scale, and it's simply a use conversation. Beyond that, the enforcement and police powers of this ordinance are not held by this board. Um, they're the licensing commissions, you know, purview. And they're a second step for every applicant, including these applicants. As would be the, the additional, the voluntary extra step of going for the, the parking bonus and bedroom bonus. Through the planning board, they use the language bonus loosely. Um, that's also the problems of any applicant, including this one. So for our purposes tonight, the most thoughtful package of decision making we can, you know, hope to deliver. Is one that just simply exercises our, you know, our, um, best effort and our, you know, our, our best decision making. With what we have to work with this evening, in spite of all the limitations, which are obvious, not the least of which is the fact we have no precedent to go by, we're building it. And then we, um, we revise as we go because we live in a frail foiled world and frail foiled units like ourselves. And we just have to like. We have to roll with it and be adaptive to the fact that we may be wrong, but we will, we won't be wrong for thoughtless reasons. But I think that's what we're gonna do, what, what we have to do. And we can figure out if it works, if it's broken, that, we'll try to fix.
I mean, it's just trying to figure out what it's deliverable, will be.
I think it's really just our decision within these very fine lines. Um, and we can. I mean, we, we can hypothesize about parking, but that's not really our decision.
Right, exactly.
Can hypothesize about, um, the licensing and enforcement, but again, not our decision.
Right.
But as long as we sort of, you know, we do what we can do as best we can tonight, I would, you know, I'll, I'll hopefully leave this room. Proud that we did the best we can tonight, under the circumstances. We wanna give everybody the fair, you know, due, due diligence and fair due process. Everyone, including neighbors as well as applicants and find balance, right?
Right.
In an imperfect world. Uh, but I, I do need to move us along because we have other applications and we have to. We just have to, we, we, we just have to move along. So, um, if there are any other questions from the board, I, um, I, I see your hand. And I, I wanna be respectful. I will give you just a quick moment.
Sure.
And I hope you understand.
That's okay.
Please.
So my home is the brick house on the right hand side. My driveway is.
And your name again?
Charlotte.
Yes.
I'm, my driveway is on the right hand side of eleven Converse Street. I just wanna know what, I mean, at seven thirty in the morning, when I'm trying to get to a patient, I have a. I just wanna know what, I mean, at seven thirty in the morning, when I'm trying to get to a patient, I have a patient at eight o'clock, I'm not gonna be looking for Matthew's number.
Public, public police on the tilt.
I mean, I, no, like, I usually end up knocking on the door, I mean, I'm a polite neighbor, I'm, I don't wanna cause.
And I didn't need to sound smug, I was just being, I was just saying, that's, I think it was right.
But I'm just letting you know, this is something that happens pretty regularly, especially because it's a two and three day rental. People don't know where they're supposed to park, for some reason, they think my driveway is the driveway that goes to that.
Especially folks that aren't familiar with the neighborhood.
That's exactly right, so I just wanna know what number I call, other than Matthews, actually, just to kind of record this, because. I've I've asked, I've asked the people who who rent there, can you please let the owners know that you're not clear on where you should park?
I think the repository, of the repository of this data will be um, the police department, if not the planning office. But in all cases, the police department is where you would, you would lodge a, you know, a concern or complaint in any circumstance. Um, anywhere by any citizen in our city, and I think it's important to think of that as the, you know, sort of the. The clearinghouse of that information, because it will be relied upon by future boards and commissions, specifically the licensing commission. As they renew any licenses annually, they will look to one data place for information about whether things have gone sideways. So it's incumbent upon everyone to say, you know, I I don't know that this will cure the issue in the moment, but it will record that the issue has happened and that this is what it was. And and perhaps like, to cure it in the moment is to knock on the door, or hopefully find a, you know, a more realistic way to solve it in the immediate moment. In that scenario, but I'm imagining that this is how this goes, you know, members of the public will start to, we as members of our collective public, right? Will all sort to learn how to, you know. Record this information, if it's not going well, this is how the city and the and the light and the commissions that govern these. These commercial uses and residential zones will endeavor to sort it out. Or jettison those that simply can or won't comply, um, and I I won't opine to presume what our council was thinking, but. You know, as I read this, as many of us have, um, that's how I read it, as trying to function. And the rest is, we will hopefully see, I suppose.
Can I ask a question? I I'm sorry, I, this, I think, I'm. I'm confused about something here, does this? Does this dwelling house have two parking spaces or zero parking spaces, that's what I'm confused about. If it's zero, I don't, we can't, we know. That's, this is the question, because.
But the planning directors already said they don't need additional parking for two.
But they do, they do need two, the the. But but, hold on, the requirement says that for a short term rental unit, uh, investor owned. You need to have the minimum parking required for the prin- the principal residential use, so.
Including recognition of any preexisting nonconformity per se.
Okay, so what, so are there zero spaces here or two?
So, well, and I I don't wanna speak for the zoning administrator, because we had to have a discussion about this today, uh, and I'm looking at this plan here as part of the reason why, you see sort of. The diagonal line is taken by the the bisecting of that driveway, the physical driveway is, has a diagonal line going through it, and the closest point they were seeing is the six point six feet, right? So, and you get a car, you know, in there and park cars, it would seem to me at best you could get one car at the far back portion of that. Using the rest of it as a pass and repass, right, not, you know, no instructions in the way, you could pass and repass and get a vehicle one. But probably not two directly on the property in the existing paved area. We can't reference outside the property right now, I think there's been no evidence provided, there's any easements or whatnot outside of that, right, so what we're dealing with is right now. For this application is, you pointed out, is there's not, there's a, you know, a grandfather, so it's been the under a lot of use, or that precondition is. To me, it would seem that there's only one you can make evidence of, perhaps, that there you could fit one, I don't think you can make an argument reasonably that you could fit some cars on the property the way that I'm seeing this. Uh, so that's the way that I see this, I would, Jennifer, of course, could speak here and give her interpretation of that, but that's what I'm saying, is that you could.
Well, okay.
I can argue that that it has one preexisting, but clearly not two, I think.
Okay, so, but that, that is a threshold issue for us to do anything, is it not?
Well, it it, well, I think the the way that the ordinance is structured, and I, I forget who mentioned it, second to go, but for two bedrooms. The ordinance does not require an additional parking space, so it assumes that regardless of whether those spaces are there on the site or not for the existing use. That they're relevant essentially.
Okay, so, so then we're saying that for the purposes of this dwelling unit, one, one is enough.
Uh, what we're actually saying is that the preexisting nonconforming residential use is not touched here by this application.
Right, so it's, so, okay, so.
And it's only the the short term rental unit use that being.
But the, but the short term rental unit statute or ordinance says that the minimum parking required for the principal residential use. Plus one additional parking space for the S T R U, except that the renting of only one or two bedrooms shall not require the additional space. At the very least here, we need two spaces.
Or and or a nonconforming.
Yeah, no, there's nonconforming use here, so there's one space, all they need is.
I think it's easier if we talk about these parking requirements discreetly, first about the preexisting nonconforming residential use, and then entirely separately, the short term rental.
Right, so we all agree, we don't need anything else for the short term rental unit if there are only one or two bedrooms being used.
Correct, correct, yeah, correct. I, yeah, and I don't know where your discussion went off with the zoning administrator relative to the parking on site in the preexisting nonconforming condition, but it would seem to me that you could really make the case. If there's one space that physically fits on the lot itself, um, you'd fit three quarters of another car, trying to squeeze it into the six point six feet.
But that, yeah, but that doesn't really get, and and this is not any, in this room's uh, hunt, right, that was the, the council's hunt was to. Match up reality with the ordinance, and if you're saying, oh yeah, if you had a preexisting nonconforming parking use. Uh, you get credit for that, but you're still cluttering the neighborhood with your parking.
Yeah, I I guess I, the only thing I can say here is that there are sometimes, uh, what seems like absurd results can sometimes get, you know, from regulations, I think that, you know, the. The council spent about three years trying to get the regulations they thought about, they think, you know, balance these issues, so it took three years to get to that point. Um, and on balancing, you know, we sometimes get to these situations which it seems like, it seems counterintuitive, this is right, you know, outcome, uh, I gave a, I think I got a good point.
But yeah, okay, you know what I'm gonna suggest, this is a bit of a digression. With subsequent, as we sort of feel our way through this, these kinds of applications, we should put these on at the end of an agenda, I think, um, in fairness. And I I know I digress, but and I leave this out of respect, I think that we, none of us should feel rushed, nor should we be taxing the other, you know, um. Docket app- applications, but just until we get up to, you know, get our sea legs, so to speak. Um, but I wanna move along, but I wanna make sure that we kind of vetted the question piece.
Well, um, well, the lot, last comment is sort of where I was talking about the deliver, deliverables of. Actually sending something that meets the ordinance, like, we can only approve this because it meets this, if you need anything beyond this. You need to talk to another body that isn't this body, because you you don't meet the requirements from where we set on day one. And that may change, the next body may give you relief and say you can use municipal parking.
The most we can permit within what we have as authority is two bedrooms or less, given the parking that's grandfathered. Um, unless and until a subsequent board, specifically the planning board, grants relief to allow for an expansion of that parking requirement. By using the municipal lots, at which point, our condition where we inclined to craft that into any approval would be triggered. Allowing for our approval to expand to envelop the subsequent planning board's approval for the additional bonus.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree with that?
I agree with that, but I I just like to, I think this comment, the the last comment made, that you had to. Excuse me, you're on your texts now, I'm talking to you like.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm trying to address your concern.
I've got kids.
I understand.
She's a nurse too.
But wait, are you telling me that that there have been numerous occasions where you have been blocked and?
Yes.
Now. That can't happen, you know, calling the police is not the answer, how are you going to pro- eliminate that from? What is your response?
Well, we actually needed to know about it, so that's been somewhat productive, so I mean.
You've never known, I thought, I thought that you.
I have told the people, because I don't, I don't really sit past you in this life.
And did you, did you not have their number either, you you only just.
If he, if he remembers my number, he can send me his number, but this, this was two years ago, and we haven't communicated.
So, so I think, you know, situational awareness and neighbor and host contact. And exchange of contacts is critical to that flow of information, in good faith.
Tell him that a lot as well.
But but, in fairness, what, and I respect that, because I, you know, you're you're doing turnovers, you're there a short time, but. And you might not be there seven o'clock.
I totally appreciate, some people are shy too, they don't wanna have to address the owner, and I I get that, and so, but like.
Well, it's not her responsibility.
Johnson said.
It's not her, it's your responsibility.
I agree, I agree, we weren't aware of it, and that's what we're.
But now they are, um, I, okay, I think that that can be a condition, I think that needs to be. Um, and I think we're, we're sort of grasping, at least I feel, I have an idea of how we would craft something like this, so this is, though I apologize to everyone else in the room who's been. Trusted an involuntary credit course on short term rental units, all of this will be on the final, uh, now, it's, uh, I think if we have any further questions. Let's address them, and if not, I I think we, let's close that deliberation.
Liberation.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna close that portion of deliberation, and again, we have the staffer book, which is very helpful, because it outlines the um, the findings, and um. I'll I'll invite Mr. Swanton to take the first pass at that, because you're, you're so good at Trump.
I'll be happy to take a first pass.
Okay, thank you.
I can understand the concern of many of the neighbors, um, I would not be really excited to have this in my residential community either, um, but. Um, the city council and their infinite wisdom has decided this is okay for the next three years to have this to rental units. And we as a zoning board have to decide whether or not it uh. Meets the criteria, which there's not a lot of criteria, one is if there's been a lot of complaints to the planning board of the police. I'm sorry, to the zoning board, zoning officer or the police, that we have to take that into consideration, but there are none on record. I understand the proposal, initially, it's for two bedrooms and four people, so I think we should. Um, so the question is, is that something, you know, I could get behind, that's maybe around the table here, but I can get behind, um. I'm happy that the applicant has indicated a uh, a willingness to have a condition around some type of sound monitoring. I thought that was a creative suggestion to try to not have it be very loud. On this parking thing, I I think there should be a condition, either sign that simply says near the front of the door, where you go in, here's where you get to park, here's where you should park. I mean, it's, I think that needs to be conditioned, of well, if we approve this thing, we need to have a sign, because you shouldn't count on people to read. You know, the fifth page of this thing and try to figure out the math, I mean, it should be very clear, don't park in the nurse's driveway, um.
So a placard of some kind.
A placard, yeah. We had in the inn on Marcus Street, we had a little placard on your back, you know, walk away, it's a little placard. Um, I'm also comforted by the fact that you have to go through licensing, and if there are complaints in the neighborhood and licensing hears about it, then that may be ended. Um, so I guess, even though I'm not crazy about this, it is something that has been allowed. Uh, and I think under the law, the way I read the law, given the lack of complaints and their willingness to put these two constraints on there. And then have to go through a licensing review to make sure that it stays copacetic, I could support this now. The additional question, I I get it, you're looking for three bedrooms and six people, and I understand the chair's excellent point, that we don't wanna revisit this again. Uh, and, you know, send you to the planning board and ask you for that, and then come back here and ask us again, so I understand the deficiency of of. Of providing our input on that as well, uh, and I would be okay with an approval from us. To go to two to four bedrooms, um, with the understanding that you could go to, I'm sorry, two, two bedrooms, four people. Approve that, with the understanding, we'd be okay with you going to three bedrooms and six people, but if the planning board approves it, but. I would like to provide input to the planning board, please don't approve it, because I've heard enough stuff from the neighborhood about parking. In this little neighborhood, and you got a playground right there, you can go right through there, if you get to the public parking lot, I'm not sure, I kind of heard. It may be a real uphill battle to get, to get uh, public parking granted for commercial use anyway, so it may be such a long shot anyway. But just in case, I, and if the rest of my comrades here, you know, disagree that we shouldn't say it as a board, but I always like to have in the minutes. That Mr. Swanton thought the planning board shouldn't go to uh, three bedrooms and six. Anyway, that's my uh, my impulse on this matter.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Mr. Black. Uh, yeah, I would echo um, Mr. Swanton's uh, comments, I do think, um, you you know, beyond what Mr. Swanton said. With respect to the noise monitoring, I like the idea that you could uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Go.
Yeah, I think you.
I mentioned, yeah.
Okay, uh, for that, the thing that monitored everything for cigarette smoke, the number of people, I think that that would be, you know. Helpful to enforce the uh, the ordinance as the city council saw fit to draft it. Um, so I think, uh, with those types of of safeguards. And the fact that, you know, despite uh, you know, what we've heard from the uh, planning office and the police that there have been complaints that. You know, that it's a positive that you guys have going for you, but I do agree with Mr. Swanton that, you know, we have to take uh. What the neighbors have come in and said very seriously, and make sure that as a going forward basis. You know, that these complaints aren't repeated, because then they can go and make these licensing uh. Bring those complaints to the licensing board, and that could be trouble for your license, so the 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 two, the two tier permitting process here. Seems like that'll also be effective.
But the three bedrooms.
I disagree with you.
Okay, very good, uh, Mr. Black.
Yeah, uh, I'm not prepared to approve three bedrooms, uh, that's my position on that, uh. But more importantly, I I wanna thank the applicants, and Mr. Johnson, Charlie Johnson here for this, uh. They're trying to work through this, I truly appreciate that, this hasn't been an easy slog, and I think, uh. The applicant here has shown a fair, modest, good face and understanding of our concerns, and I appreciate that. Uh, so that being said, I'm certainly prepared to approve uh, the the two bedroom. Uh, for occup- for occupancy, uh, short term dwelling unit with a number of conditions. First, uh, adequate insurance, I'm not sure what adequate insurance is, it sounds to me that you probably have that. Uh, and I presume that it includes some, some level of liability insurance as well, I, I'll I'll pick your benefits on that, and I'll turn to Johnson. That'd be one criteria, uh, condition two, that the bedrooms at all of the house be properly uh. Uh, fixed with all appropriate smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and any other. Uh, building code requirements relative to health and safety, uh, uh, three, that there be a mechanism. Put in place uh, whereby neighbors uh, can. Reach out twenty four hours a day, either by email, phone, or both, with respect to any complaint. Uh, and four, I'll follow up, I guess, the 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 parking issues are quite a concern of mine, really, if your testimony, how to take it. It's very troublesome to me, but and I, that probably could have been the case, even if that's a residential house, so so there has to be some good face among the people here, but. Uh, some sort of clear designation as to where uh, uh, uh. Yes, um, they park, because it's, it is not under any stretch of the imagination of, or that that should happen.
I I had a filming crew there in my driveway filming for an advertisement, it was, that was sort of comical, but it just was strange to me that no one knew where they could be.
It's understandable, I guess, it's on the table, so, so those conditions, uh.
We'll, we'll get to that in the motion.
Right.
But thank you, Mr. Black, I appreciate you bringing that, uh, Mr. Giddo.
So I, I I support the uh, the two bedroom for for people, because I believe that's what the ordinance allows us to do. At least in my, my eyes, and my feeling is, is that if they do wanna go to another body to try to get. Uh, relief and and do something bigger with municipal parking, I would be okay if that came back here, I think that'd be a pretty quick vote for us. If another body had approved that, um, but I just think coming from here, it should only be what the letter of law allows. And then they can do their appeals down the line, and we see where it goes. I think the way the city council wrote it was to be fair to the owners of the property and allow them to get some revenue. But also to be fair to the neighbors and keep down the amount of cars and people and activity. So for me, I just feel comfortable staying right, right where that law says we should be. So for me, I just feel comfortable staying right, right where that law says we should be. And then if other bodies wanna expand on it, that.
And if they come back, your, your thinking is that it would be a short. Vote from our standpoint.
Okay, another body had a very good reason to expand it. I'm sure they'll hear from the same neighbors.
Okay, um, very good, um. Was there anything else?
There's no sir.
That's all right, um, then, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I, I would support the, uh. Two-bedroom, four occupancy, and I, I would also be comfortable with including, um. Three and six, if they got food from the planning board.
I, I, I share the sentiments, it sounds like most of my colleagues. I, I would approve the, the two and four as well, and I'd like to be comfortable with the conditionality. Of, in the event that, and only in the event that the planning board should approve, uh, further expansion of parking, um, you know. Shall the zoning board's approval be expanded to include and envelop that. Three-bedroom, six occupant, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that as well, as well as the other conditions, and I think, um, Mr. Lyle and Mr. Bennet mentioned. Sound monitoring, party placard in, in their house. Um, any further deliberations? We'll close that portion of the public hearing, and, uh, at this point, uh, do we have a motion to approve? And if so, do we have conditions?
I'll, I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion to approve this special permit for eleven Prime Street? The structure shall only be used as a one- or two-bedroom short-term rental unit, um, with maximum of four people. Because of existing non-conforming parking on site. And two, the applicant shall maintain a valid short-term rental unit license per the city ordinance. Number three, the applicant shall have a sign on the premises showing where. People can park and where they cannot park. And number four, the applicant shall. Put in place a sound monitoring, um. Device.
Number five, insurance, uh, commercial insurance will be short-term rental rider.
And number five, the applicant should maintain a, a, a commercial insurance. Policy for short-term or for.
For what?
With a short-term rental, um, a short-term rental unit rider.
It says vacation.
Vacation rental.
Vacation rental rider.
There you go.
Can we add friendly amendment to the number four to have this, the, the sound monitor, that ants thing that.
The insect sound that also detects occupants and. Okay, the minute system.
There's two systems, and that one does that, and the other one does that.
Okay.
The minute system.
Good.
And your team system.
Maybe restrict it to whatever's legal in the United States. But that's, I can't believe that's what we. People moving.
All right, now, what's not in the motion, because I, I couldn't quite figure out what we all were on it, was the thing about. Three bedrooms to the planning boards. I've left that out. If somebody else would like to suppose wording of that, we could tack it on as friendly amendments.
I can, as chair, but anyone, anyone else can, um.
Do we have?
So, well, just. Order of this, if we tack that on. People that don't want that can vote the whole thing off.
Correct. How many votes do we need? Four or five?
Four, yes. So I would suggest we don't tack it on, yeah, because it has the highest likelihood of success, but after going to the planning board.
Yeah, I think that.
And we can refine our process when it does, and if we find that it's more, that it's not that big of a deal, then.
Yeah, okay, so I believe five and a rating conditions, right?
Yes, five and a.
Do we, do we, do we have a second?
I will second it with, and I would like, or I second it, uh, with following friendly amendment, also some additional conditions. Uh, six, appropriate, uh. Smoke, CO2, and other safety devices.
It's a building, yeah, that is, um, wow.
Why do we have to get in an oily ocean?
In a wetting.
How about if they don't?
It's already in it.
Yeah, it's in some building. Compliance with.
All right, and I'm concerned with those. I, I, I'm concerned about this a lot.
Perhaps in, in, in the, in the interest of, um, I think the spirit of Mr. Bennet's, uh, thought. Here is, uh, you know, compliance as, as the catch-all last condition. Compliance with any and all local, state. And federal, you know, building codes.
I don't need that, uh.
We don't need. We don't really need to say it publicly, we can just say compliance with any and all local, state, building, and a fire code.
You still want that? You do. So you want it? Yes or no?
I do want.
Okay. Um, do we have a second?
And, no, one more, and that there be some sort of mechanism for, uh, receipt of complaints twenty-four seven.
And what does that mean? Like a, just a sign, call this number?
I don't know. To make sure that, that I could keep that.
No, no, the enforcement discretion goes at the next level.
But how would they, so I can see if they could put a placard in the premises or a guest. But the guest isn't gonna complain about themselves.
So all neighbors within a hundred and fifty feet should receive a telephone number that they can call twenty-four seven regarding any objection. Yeah, with respect to what's going on.
So, um, so full exchange of contact information between host and, you know, uh, and you know, the butters. But let's just go with it and see.
Okay, I don't understand, just practically speaking, if I, if I was the owner over here, how would I get something out to all butters with a hundred and fifty feet?
Take a piece of paper, put it in the mailbox.
I would roll it too.
I think that's.
All right, so I guess you already did send a notice to them, all you have to write. Have it a butter.
All right, so number seven is to notify.
I'm sorry, are, are we going, are we going with the, uh, same of butters notices for this? Or is it a different grade?
No, it's the same of butter notice.
Same of butter, just for simple. Notify these same of butter notice.
All right.
Of a number to call with.
Well, with confidence. Uh, okay, so, uh, anything further, gentlemen?
Do you have to go through the nine?
No.
Reference some?
Yeah.
By reference.
Yeah, um. By reference, great. Okay, so we have a motion is made, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Very good, uh, motion's made, um, by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Bennett, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, calling the role on the, uh, on the motion, uh, Mr. Swan, yes. Uh, Mr. Dela, yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Um, Mr. Chandler.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, um, that is, is it six? The eyes have it, and the motion carries with conditions, and, uh, thank you all for your. Patience, your heroic, like, Herculean patience with all of us, uh, as we flow through this. It's not the last of this, but thank you and apologies to those of. Good luck, and, um, good luck to you. Okay, moving on, um. Uh, this is the matter of twenty-two Dell Street, um, Michael, uh, Starrett. This is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permits, uh, conditions, approvals, uh. Uh, to add an eight-by-twelve mudroom to the back of the house. May we, and I believe we have, uh, Michael Starrett, is it Starrett?
Yeah, you didn't get it right the first time, you did just that, Michael Starrett.
Starrett, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you have the floor, sir.
I think I have a little, yeah. Yep, I'll just briefly introduce this, uh, this is a small mudroom we're proposing to add on to the back of our home at twenty-two Dell Street. The dimensions, I'll overlay the sort of shadow lines here, the dimensions are eight by, uh, twelve. So, eight to the end of the house, twelve back, uh, it, it's just a bit inside of the. Existing line of the house on the hour, it's there to just not have a real lot of house, uh, come. If you couldn't have it, so from the perspective of, uh, neighborhood, it's, uh, entirely behind the house. I didn't think I'd ever write this down, but our, um, neighbors next door, um, Jordan and Susan. Uh, are supportive of this, but I won't speak on those topics in a minute here. Uh, so here you're seeing the top-down view, it's, uh. You know, a, a small place where there's currently stairs, and we're just proposing to, um, have a bit of, uh, a. Uh, and here is, uh, a rendering constructed. Um, you're not seeing the landing, but you can see where the door is, uh, currently, and so the new mudroom is proposed to. Add on then, maybe in the same roof level, uh, and would have a step down, uh, at the new exit of the home. But, uh, or relatively straightforward. Proposed addition to the home. Uh, and here, uh, just drawn quickly the. Uh, new area in the bottom. So you can see that it's fitting within the existing setbacks of the house. That's all I've got here.
Very good. Thank you, um. Public comment. Anyone in the room wish to be heard on this application? Uh, I think that's left over, well, maybe not, um, yes, it is. Yeah, it's a leftover from last, from the first. Uh, see no hands, anyone online? Looks like we have, do we have?
Uh, Nicole, did you want to address this particular application?
Yeah.
We know that the public comment in the last editor is, uh, complete, so.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm sorry, just for clarity, not everybody knows if you don't attend all these meetings, typically there's a, a solid block of public comment related to each application. But it's typically not reverted back to, you know, repeatedly, because it wouldn't be possible for those years. So, um, so apologies if you're, if you're raising your hand later on and wanting to speak again, and, um, not able to do so, so.
Very good, um, okay, going once, going twice, um. And we're sure that you've tried to unmute that mic, just to make sure. Um, let's see.
Nothing, yeah.
Okay, very good, um, see no hands, and no comments online, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, you know, two questions from the board, beginning with this one? No question.
This is a lot. Um, what do you think they might put on it for materials, like siding, windows?
Uh, we're gonna reset the whole house at the time, so it'll be redone in hardy.
Oh, so septicious, hardy, hardy.
And the windows and windows.
What was the first word you were using? Oh, yeah, 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 uh, cement fiber, yes, exactly.
Uh, and, and the windows to match the existing.
That's right. Yeah, exactly.
No further questions.
I have no questions. Mr. Gitter. No questions. This, this, Jen.
Yeah, it looked like in the drawing, you're gonna put the mudroom on piles.
Uh, we have a structural engineer, uh, who's done the work here, it's, uh. Because it's, so we had initially investigated, could we do this as a two-story, and, and which was not my preference. And fortunately, the structural engineer said also that if you're doing a one-story, we can do that, uh, I think called a Bigfoot. Um, but, and in fact, I think his intention is to draw it up with just one, and he doesn't think we'll need the second one. Uh, but that two-story, we would need a fourth foundation.
So your crawl space underneath?
Uh, open them in the.
Pockets.
Be piled to a, um, a spread for the Bigfoot.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. These was on a plumb line quite a bit as well.
Okay, um, and then the only reason they're here, I assume, is the side yard setback. Is non-conforming and is standing. It's like it was six feet. But he's inside of that.
Correct.
So we can say that there's no.
Additional, there's no, yeah, there's no intensification.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, um, I've got no, no, uh, no questions, uh, so we'll close that portion and go to deliberations, uh.
Well, um, this is a two-pronged classic test on special permit. Is there a new non-conformity? No, there's not. The second prong, is it, is it substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood than the existing, pre-existing non-conforming? Use. Uh, I see this as, uh. A modest mudroom in the back of a house, which can barely see through the street. Um, so I don't see this, I mean, I don't see this as, uh. Substantially more detrimental, so I can support this application.
Very good, this is a lot, uh, I would agree with Mr. Swanton, and I could also support this application. Mr. Bennett.
I concur.
Mr. Gitter.
I support the application.
Mr. Chen.
Yes, do.
I, uh, I agree as well, um, well said, gentlemen, and, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Uh, do we have a motion to approve, and if so, any conditions?
Motion to approve a special permit for non-conformities for twenty-two Dell Street with no special conditions.
Very good, uh, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Motion's made by Swanton, seconded by Mr. Lyle, calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes, Mr. Dela.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, Mr. Chen.
Yes, Champetti, yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you, Rex. Hope you're average.
All right, the, uh, next application before us is twenty-six Washington Street. This is the application of Kelly Brody, Care of Lisa Mee, Me Talwin Acosta LLC. The applicant seeks all necessary permissions, permits, and approvals to, uh, for a special permit for non-conformities. To demolish an existing single-story attached garage at the side of the structure and construct a two-story addition. In the same location, uh, constituting an upward extension of a non-conforming primary front and side yard setback. And, uh, we have attorney, uh, Ryan Clemens on behalf of Me Talwin Acosta, attorney of office.
Thank you, Chair. Anyone who wants to stand up and stretch it feels really great.
It looks like it feels good.
I, I did ask, there's nothing to.
Did we not pay the electrical bill?
Yeah, some sort of HVAC, so they can adjust, so the windows, that's what you do, sorry.
All right, good evening, Chair members and board, my name is Ryan Clemens of Me Talwin Acosta. Uh, here tonight on behalf of Kelly Brody, here with us as well, and her son, uh, the owner of twenty-six Washington Street. In connection with the application dated April ninth, twenty twenty-four, for a special permit for non-conformities in order to construct a two-story addition. In the footprint of the existing garage at twenty-six Washington. So on the first line, we have some context on the property as it exists today. Twenty-six Washington is a single-family, three-story residence in the B-three zoning district and D-C-O-D on a corner lot on Washington and Summer Streets. This may have been a two-family in the past, but is currently a single-family. The home was constructed in around seventeen ninety, but it also features a one-car garage off the right side of the home, estimated to have been added. Around nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-nine. The Newburyport Public Library issued an official report concluding that the Sanborn Fire Insurance Map with edits current through nineteen sixty-one. Shows only the house, but not the garage, and, uh, no other resources after nineteen sixty-one or before a nineteen sixty-nine photo that. Sartor's provided, uh, contains any record of the garage on the property. And this is consistent with the nineteen twenty-four assessor's map as well, that shows only the structure without the garage. So the garage was built sometime between nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-nine, is therefore less than seventy-five years old. And then several pre-existing non-conformities exist for a lot of area, primary and secondary yard setback and lot coverage, but the property conforms to all other. Dimensional requirements, frontage, left-hand side, rear, yard setbacks, fully open spaces and parking, and none of these are proposed to change. So on the, uh, next slide, please, we've got a scanned nineteen twenty-four assessor's map, just referenced with the properties outlined in red. And you can see that, uh, there is no, it doesn't show the garage the right, just shows the main, uh, structure. And then on the next slide is a copy of the library's report, including that they do not have any records. Depicting the garage before the nineteen sixty-nine photo and a little inset of the, uh, fire map as well, also not showing the garage. All right, and then moving next, next slide, we have photos of the home as it exists today, and you can see the slanted garage along Washington Street. Uh, on the next slide, we've got a clear view of the entry to the garage, and on the next slide, a view of Washington, where you can. Can't really see it. On the next slide, there's a photo of the house from Summer Street, uh, where you can't see it at all from that angle. Okay, so that brings us, so these photos of the property and home, I hope they convey, you know, the size of the. House, uh, compared to the small lot. And then, um, that brings us to proposed conditions under the application today. Uh, the applicant's project proposes to remove that one-car garage that we just saw, and start a two-story addition in the same footprint. It's, will still feature a one-car garage on the first floor, but the additional add will move on the second floor and two roof decks with spiral stairs for access. As you will see in the following plans. The project creates no new non-conformities, rather upward extensions of the primary front yard and right-side yard non-conformities. Project also proposes dormers, which the city's building demolition ordinance exempts. And a quick note, as I went over earlier, the garage is less than seventy-five years old, nonhistoric, and so the demolition does not. Apply to its roofline. Further, the project proposes to, uh, remove less than twenty-five percent of the historic. Further, the project proposes to remove less than twenty-five percent of the historic portion of the home's walls. And so the D-C-O-D is not triggered either, all of which the zoning determination included instructing the applicant. To apply for a special permit for nonconformities for single, two-family structures and uses per section nine dash B two A with the zoning ordinance. So on the next slide, we have the site plan. You could zoom in on that. Thank you. We've got the proposed dormers in the orange. And within the ordinance, approved setbacks and dimensions. Then the rectangle to the right side of the house shows the both the existing garages. And proposed two-story additions, identical footprint, because again, it's being built in the same footprint. So the second floor deck is in that lighter kind of beige and the third floor deck. Is in the orange to give you a sense of how they'll be constructed. On the next slide. We have the front elevations along Washington Street, both the existing and the proposed showing the garage and then the addition retaining the garage. Also showing the second floor room and the third floor roof deck. On the next slide, we have the rear elevations, which show the proposed dormers, a small rear exit for the garage, the second floor deck, the second floor room. The third floor roof deck and the spiral stairs connecting them all too. On the next slide, we have the right side elevations. That show a bit clearer about how that two-story addition is constructed with the. Different. Different elevation of that deck. But also staying within the same footprint of the existing garage. And on the next slide, we have the left side elevations, which show that there will be a few details of this proposal visible from Summer Street as well. And then on the next slide too, we have three D renderings to kind of show more of the diagonal view to piece it together in your mind. Of the two-story addition and the proposed decks and stairs. So going to the next slide, all of these proposed conditions in each of the ordinance's special permit criteria as follows. Under those criteria, pre-existing nonconforming structures such as the property and home here. May be extended or altered based on the following findings by the CBA. First, that no new nonconformities are posed and none are proposed here. The project only consists of upwardly extending the pre-existing nonconformities for primary front yard and right side yard setbacks. And then second, the project will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. And substantially means in this context, to a greater significant extent. So that the board would have to make a finding that the proposal was greatly significantly and substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Which is not possible here, since the project will not be substantially more detrimental as compared to the existing structure and lot. The project removes a later added garage that is out of place with the original portion of the structure. It builds an addition that is entirely within that existing footprint of the structure. And adds only around a hundred and fifty square feet floor area on a lot of nonconforming lot area, spare modest increase in square footage. Project is also not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the neighborhood itself, which contains many comparable examples of the project. Of what the project poses, including large exterior stairwells, second-story decks, decks in general and dormers. So on the next slide, we have an aerial of the neighborhood itself with little markers to show where we've sourced it was from the next few slides. So on the next slide, we have twenty-seven Washington. Which is property's direct-to-butter and it features the second floor roof deck. We have another view of that. Second floor, right? Coming off the second. Yeah.
If he's in France, it's first.
All right, got a good view of that. On the next, oh, then the next slide, please, we have thirty-six Market Street. And on these next photos, you'll see the large exterior stairwell servicing the different entrances to that building. Then on the next property. We've got eighteen Washington Street, which a little bit earlier and has a second floor roof deck. On the next one, fifteen seventeen Washington, we have decks here as well. And then this property also features dormers and then there's another one that shows its steps off the side of the building too. On the next property, we have one fifty-six to one sixty-two High Street, featuring multiple stories of decks and spiral stairs connecting to access them. The next property, thirty-four Market Street, covered patios and semi-inclined outdoor spaces rising up. Next property, please, twenty-eight to thirty Market, a third floor roof deck in the back there. Thank you. On the next slide, one and two Pleasant Street, which features both dormers. And then that fourth floor deck and little parapet blocking area up top. And then finally, we have nineteen to twenty-one Tickham Street, which also has a third floor roof deck coming off the property and an extensive dormer as well. So. Then that brings us to our third criteria. If you, if any reasonable alternatives exist here. The property is a small, pre-existing, nonconforming lot and the project proposes to build within the existing footprint of the first floor garage. Only extending nonconformity, nonconformities vertically. The alternatives would mean building outside of this footprint, which is less reasonable, since that would intensify nonconformities and take up more space. On an otherwise small lot with increased lot coverage. And potentially eliminate off-street parking spaces too, which would disrupt the neighborhood. Also, section B C, as the standard states, is generally applicable here because the property will remain as a single-family use. In total, the project cannot be found to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. So to summarize on the last slide, please, thank you. The property here is pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family home on a corner lot. Where the project proposes to remove the existing nonhistoric one-car garage and construct a two-story addition in the same footprint. The project thus requires a special permit for nonconformities. Per section nine dash B two A. And then under that section's criteria, no new nonconformities are proposed and the project will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the pre-existing nonconformant structure as compared to the structure itself, its surrounding structures. And if you, if any reasonable alternatives exist, the project therefore meets that section's requirements. And so we hereby request the board approve this application for a special permit for nonconformities at twenty-six Washington Street. And thank you for your consideration. Look forward to answering any questions you may have.
All right, very good. Thank you for the presentation and the detailed attorney Fenn's. We'll close that portion of public hearing, go to public comment. Anyone who should speak? See no hands online? Do we have anyone online? We don't. Anyone online like to comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, go to questions from the board and we'll begin with Mr. Swan. This is currently a single-family house. It will remain a single-family house?
Yes.
The pictures show, not that one, but the other perspective, the other elevation.
Did you want the perspective or?
A picture or either one?
The right side?
Yeah. The bottom left one over there. Is that what it looks like on the street?
That would be more of what it looks like if you were closer to it also.
From Market Street.
If you were on the property to, from Washington Street, if you were to walk to the side of the building, because it's from that down.
I mean, the other side, I would like to see it from Market Street.
From Summer?
Summer, yes. It's on Washington and Summer, so.
Correct.
Summer Street side.
Yeah.
Is the bottom one there?
Yes.
And it has these big circular things, staircases. That one is going up to the, excuse me, second floor roof deck. That's like a third floor deck. I get confused, but the one on top. There's a garage.
There's the garage. On top of the garage.
And on top of that, there's a deck.
And I refer to the deck outside of that additional room as the second floor.
Second floor deck. It's sort of on a third floor, right?
No, but then there's the third floor on top of the second floor roof. So there are two decks being proposed.
But that picture shows a pretty, that that.
Yeah.
That has a double-glass door behind it. Is that on the third floor?
It is.
Okay, so I think that's fine. I get confused.
Oh, sorry.
Laid out.
It's been a long night.
Yes, sorry, I also go through this one. You know, we see a lot of proposals to. Add additions and things. This one is on a major street, Washington, and you're not only going up with the second floor, you're also putting this deck on top with a big spiral staircase. Have you thought, is there any other place that that could be that would be less impactful to such a major street as Washington? I mean, a lot of the other photos you show. These second-floor decks on the third story are on the back of the house, not on the front, right? Not on a major road. Had you thought about whether that deck needs to be right there on Market Street, looking down on?
It does due to the unique historic character of the property, the main house itself and the D-C-O-D limit any further. Proposals or alternatives. And the size of the lot too, because it's so small and it's lot coverage is already high. The remaining space filled on the ground is very limited and would further exacerbate a nonconformity. Also, even though some of the decks in the photos we showed are to the rear of houses. This one is to the rear of Summer Street as well, which is also a major road and it's tucked behind. But also some of those houses featured decks and other outdoor structures. Also right on Washington Street towards the front too, so we felt that. Two, it's not substantially more detrimental than those frontward facing features in elsewhere in the neighborhood.
That one's a good example, but that's on like second floor, this is on the third floor, but whatever. Anyway, I have another one, questions. Thank you. Very good. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Yeah, so I just wanna kind of get my bearings. So if I'm, if I'm driving down Market Street, right? And I look to the left. Down Washington Street, I'm driving down towards Merrimack Street. I see the location where the addition will be placed, correct? And it's like the, one of the, a major. View area, right? Because you're looking down the street, it's right there. Yeah, okay. So. Yes, my question would be. I understand the purpose of, of the addition and it makes sense to me. I don't understand why it doesn't sort of incorporate. Any of the sort of historic structural or historic. Characteristics of the existing. Building.
I would say, respond to that by saying that the historic characteristics of this building are relatively simple. In comparison to other more elaborate historic buildings in town, even on Washington Street that have more ornate, smaller details. These ones are relatively simple, streamlined, so it matches that as well. But also too, it keeps with the principle of that four historic houses, you don't. I think it's technically a historic commission and a state standard, but you don't build them to match completely. To look as if they had existed there all along, because that would be disingenuous. So you want to keep them at least conforming to the broader style of the house, of the historic house. But also not be disingenuous to when it was built either and not copy exactly. Or try and make it look like it had been there all along.
And with respect to the, the sort of doors and windows and trim and siding. What would that, what would that look like? As far as the. Because there's no, there's no details on the plan as to that kind of stuff, like we don't know what, you know, whether you've got like. A four-inch reveal on the platform or five-quarter trim around the windows. We don't know what's really going on here.
Andy, did we look at the elevations for at least the front, I believe, is the first slide of them? And if we zoom in on the proposed below. So we have some details, including matching windows, we have matching siding. We also have trim and rigboard to match the existing house. So even though it's not, you know. Perfectly one hundred percent, there are some matching details to keep it consistent with style at least. And then I believe we'll have more details too on the side elevations on the right side. Yeah. Again, the trim and rig extends around the new addition and the windows match too. On the side of the addition as well. And we believe it strikes that balance between keeping the style consistent, but again, not trying to copy one hundred percent. As if they were building third, fourth roof decks in seventeen ninety.
Right. And now are the French doors, are those like one pane or are those multi-pane or what, what's the thought there?
Those will be double to allow more access out into the space.
I understand that's what the French doors, right?
Yes, they are.
But I meant with like, with respect to the, the. What, the style of mullions that you would have in there, or is it just one pane of glass? That's sort of what I'm wondering.
Oh, I don't know that level of detail myself.
You have to grill, yeah.
We'll see.
What, what's the French door like? It's just like a void pair of eyes looking out at it.
Oh, you mean like are they divided lights?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So then they are just, they're just open pane, just.
I would think it's gonna be just one clear piece. I hadn't honestly thought about that, but I think, I would think that it would just be clear because anything else would look out of place.
If you back that up. But Andy, if you just back up that picture. Slips on.
I mean, if there's something that's, that's would, you know, that would be better, that you can throw the historical look, I'm all for it. What, what would you?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I just know. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to tell you what I think you should do. But I'm just wondering if, if we're. You know, trying to get to best product possible.
No, of course.
I don't know, you know, if, if. If the single pane look is. If it, if it adds the lovely historical aspects of this, of this house, that's the thing. And you do have a very, that's a very visible area. You're on that corner of Washington and Market, that's a super visible area. That's what I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Would you entertain some doors with panes as opposed to the single?
Of course, of course.
We'd be interested in, we'd be open to adding that as condition to have paned French glass doors on the third floor roof deck.
Yeah, I think that would alleviate the concern about the door. I don't know about anybody else, you know, to going around in question. So I'll, I'll stop here, like.
I'm just curious, the. I think Mr. Swan is kind of. And I can share the same. Musing about this spiral stairway, seems like it's not very. What's the reason for? Yeah, I mean, can you access those decks from the, those two decks from the inside of the house, I'm assuming?
You can, but it's the added convenience of having down to the rear yard and having. Decisive consistent flow up from the, from the yard back up to the patios and the, and the decks rather than going inside. And the spiral staircases too are consistent with that high street property that had them in much larger scale.
See, it doesn't mean I like it.
They're, they're also a lot more compact means of access rather than building, you know, a regular staircase to go that will. Go up and consume the entire back of the building.
Okay, now you're telling something that makes sense. So, just so I understand, I mean, there's not just, you would have to reconfigure and restructure the interior of the house. To gain access to those two down. Or just hard door, I mean. So there will be just open door, I'm sure.
From the French doors.
Oh, okay.
And there's the entryway to from the.
Yes.
Second floor room out onto the first. Second floor roof deck too. But the stairs bring it all together in connection with the backyard.
So, yeah, I, you know, we're, I mean, I don't consider us the taste police, right? It's the garage obviously is not adding anything to that, the structure and what we want to do is a big, more useful space. It is, it does strike you that it's a beautiful seventeen hundreds house, but the addition doesn't. Really seem to blend to it for some reason. But I, I realize there's other houses in the neighborhood that have similar, just curious that it's very boxy and it just doesn't. Blend down, but again, tasteful is your home. I do believe that, that French door should have mullions because it is part of the seventeen hundred structure. And seventeen hundred structure would have mullion glass. It would have six individual panes. It would have six individual pieces of glass in wood, so you you should try to at least make that.
Absolutely, I can do that for sure.
Yeah, I I think that when people see that, that will, that will look real nice, like it could have been back in the day.
Yeah.
Um and then the last thing is, maybe it's code, I see no windows on the bottom of the garage on the side. Is that a fire code or is there a safety code or not having any? Windows in the bottom of the garage, it's just a white wall.
It's a fence right next to it, so having windows to a fence wouldn't add much value and it's also the garage space too, so um. Windows to a fence in a garage didn't seem to make sense for the expensive windows.
Understood, understood. Um. That's all I have.
My next.
Chairman, you're next, alright. Um yeah, I guess I. Have some thoughts, like I think my colleagues are running. Running towards this, I guess I don't. When you live a three quarter view from this look with the new garage on it and the big pocket spiral staircase hanging off of it. I think it destroys the character of that house. Again, we're not the taste police, but there's no real reason for that staircase. You don't need it for egress. It's kind of like having a swing set in the backyard, it's nice. Um. It's just, I think that's the one thing that's for me is killing the character of this addition. Um you know, the the upper deck is nice, that's fine. Can you look at the three quarter view, I think it was. Yeah, the well balance from the backyard.
The backyard.
It was like the street view, that's our.
Yeah.
You can see it from the street.
Uh yeah. No, the first uh page of the proposed of the elevations, I believe, yeah.
But even if like if I was to the right a little bit further, I looked up uh. Washington Street.
Yeah, we don't have a vantage point.
Okay, yeah. You're gonna see this big pocket spiral staircase sticking out. Um which to me doesn't fit the character of that house and I think that's what's giving some of us uh. Cause for concern, cause it it, you know, if it was a second means of egress because it was an apartment up there or something, fine, but it's not. You know, it's just a fun thing to have. Big pocket spiral staircase. And I guess it doesn't, uh because it's not enclosed, we don't count, we don't count it towards setbacks.
Correct.
If they had enclosed it, it would be a setback.
Yeah, correct.
Cause it, cause it hangs up quite a bit, a couple of feet.
Understood.
Yeah. So I mean aesthetically, it looks like, hey, this thing's almost in that guy's yard. Cause it hangs out so much. Uh but no, I, we're not the taste police, it's just, I think that's one of the things where you you're seeing here is. You got a beautiful old seventeen hundreds building. Staircase hanging off on one side now, which is very visible to all of us. But with that said, I have no questions.
Yeah. Uh we, are we any questions?
Yeah, we're still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, 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 no. So I I, you know, I I think I answered some of the questions of my colleagues on um. Aesthetic continuity and it's because of the sensitivity of the historic structure. Um and its context, it's in the vernacular that, you know, of the city generally, but. Anywhere where we end, you know, home in this period, this is a, and this is an Adam style colonial, the Gambrel. You know, roofs, it's very classic. Um architectural, legal architectural style. And yes, it it over the years has had the garage, you know. Append to it and this is an opportunity to adapt that, make it better, make it usable and I I certainly applaud you both for that effort. I do agree with um, I think Mr. Ginta and others who. Thought that this might be um valuable to have divided lights in the uh French doors aligned with the period. Um I also see the rendering of the garage door itself. Uh can you bring that slide up? There's, so there's the animation rendering and then there's the architectural rendering. One has just sort of white in the animation rendering there. The garage door appears to just be white, stark, no detail, but in the architectural rendering, it looks as though it has. Uh recess paneling sometime. My question is, can you, would you consider um a. A carriage style um door? And there are lots that are architecturally.
I think that was beautiful.
Uh you know, and it's period and then at least what I think it looks more like is a carriage house. Here after this building and 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 it would still function in many of the same ways if you look online, there's lots of these. When when it, when it sets down and, you know, it has all of the hardware and uh, you know, the engine buckling, the hardware that all the spoils in the place. And it looks like it opens up this way, but it really doesn't.
Doesn't, okay.
But um I think just in a, to take an an approach of of I I just sharing my own thoughts, this is your decision, it's. Your taste and your preference.
Actually, I like that idea. I I I honestly hadn't thought about that greater detail with it yet.
Be- because these structures like our city in general is so. Close to the rights of way of, you know, of of sidewalks, it's like every colonial city, it's very much a walking city. So we approach our built environment low and slow, we see it at a walking pace versus driving by, so. All of these little details are amplified in a ability to be appreciated because. We see them and absorb them at such a slow speed and such a close proximity, we often deal with this with High Street and South End. And other places and other communities like this deal with the same thing. The walkability of our city is that we're very close to our, you know, bricks and stairs, so I just offer that as a friendly. I don't know.
Yeah, point well taken, yeah, absolutely.
My other question is uh building materials, um do you plan to use? I I know that that, those clavirians are are cedar, um but.
They're currently cedar.
Are you planning to do sort of a cement tissues or cement, cement based or some some natural uh looking material? I guess the question really is, you you're not planning to buy.
Oh no, I was planning to match it.
Okay, um cause then again goes with sort of the continuity uh which which without us policing taste, it goes.
Yeah.
My apologies, you've already done.
Oh yeah, no, no, of course.
I didn't see that, I didn't notice, actually. Uh so that's, that's my only question, um and I appreciate your willingness to think about the architectural element of both the French doors and that. Uh any other questions, Chris? Um alright, we'll close that portion and go to deliberation and. You're carrying, you're carrying all the heavy, the heavy weight on.
This is a special permit, we've got a two-pronged house, the first prong is are there any new non-conformities? There are no new non-conformities, so that's out. The second prong is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than it's current in the whole city? Um. And, you know, for me, this picture here is the one I look at more than anything else, um. I think someone said, but I think I said, you've got a really classic, you know, older. Amber's seventeen hundreds house here. It's also on a major thoroughfare on Washington, so right on a corner. Um so it's very visible and I'm glad you're, you know, taking care of it and making it nice. I, the only thing that's different from the front is what's happening on the right side and is that substantially more detrimental? Well. It's a lot taller and we have turned down other properties in town that are right on the street that have tried to, you know, greatly increase their massing on the street. Um. Then on top of that, you're adding. A a roof deck on the third floor of Washington Street. I realize you have a challenging house next to. To the east, uh southern paint heated district, um and.
You've noticed, yes.
It's not the prettiest and you know, they have to deal with all the uh. With all the egress. Uh and I'm not trying to compare you to it. On the other hand, there's a lot of other houses on Washington Street that are real. Really nice and I just, um I have a problem with the. Adding a third floor deck on the front of a house on Washington Street, I mean, it's 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 one thing to ask us to. For the major upward extension of the massing on the right side of the house, but then to also put. Deck on top of it and a big flying staircase that comes off the right side. Is that substantially more detrimental than what's on top? Yeah, it might be. So. Um and that shows before and after pretty well. Uh and I'm not sure that's a huge improvement for the neighborhood, uh and I I could get along with the second story. I I I have the issue with the adding a rooftop, I mean, this is not Plum Island. Uh and adding a the flying staircase, anyway, that's my input. So I like some things, but it goes a little over the top of mine. Alright, uh Mr. White.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so during the question piece, I think we got to some uh some. Good uh back and forth on various items, the uh French doors and the garage door. Um and with respect to Mr. Swan's concerns, I am. I I'm on the fence with those. I I understand what he's saying, if you're looking like. Off the roof deck to your neighbors across the street, I don't know if they're gonna love that, but to your neighbor to the right side. I mean, it's kind of six to one half dozen of the other. Um so it's a tough one. Um. It it's a tough one. Um I don't, I don't think I'm opposed. To it, I I just don't know if I love the the deck on the second floor. But I don't know, I I don't know that I'm opposed to it either. Uh so I'll just. Leave it at that and let these other, the other guys take it their way.
I will be as clear in my opinion with my colleagues, Stephen.
Hopefully it'll be more clear.
Yeah, I wish. No, I I I think this one is giving us, we're starting with this bit, uh and I think I I I. I have some concerns about it and typically I I come to my decisions. I I rarely have to chew on chew on it, as long as I'm chewing on this. Perhaps that's good. Uh but I think uh with the changes that have been suggested and which have been agreed to. I believe uh looking at the other homes in the neighborhood. Um I I I find that it would be hard for me to uh conclude that uh. This, it would be substantially more detrimental, hardening back to the. Black letter rule we're trying to apply here, and it's a rigorous test that as you've educated us on, or reminded us of. So uh uh it's not my favor, it's uh but it's, I think, I can get to the point with those improvements that I think. Chain is, I don't, uh that we've suggested, I think I could get to the point of improvements and I appreciate your reference and. Doing this to a valuable house.
So I I don't think it's central metro, but um. You know, again, I'm not the taste police, so I'm gonna make some suggestions. There's a struggle with the deck, maybe because that looks like a deck that could possibly put off, be put on like, you know, and I. My nineteen sixty eight ranch. There, it it doesn't appear to have any. Any uh historical view to it. Maybe if it, if it did have a historical wrath, and I'm not trying to create Disney World like a fake old house. I'm just saying that that sort of deck could show up on any house and. Again, if you love it, that that's great, I'll vote for it, but the reality is something more could be done with that deck. To blend in with Washington Street and I realize you have a little bit of a challenge of a neighbor next door, but. We have the vision, a a world where that house is completely redone and everybody walks down Washington Street and. Each addition and and remodel, it's like, wow, how beautiful, right? So I think a little bit of work on that deck, on the view of it, could really help. Um I also think period lighting on the front of that house. With might make it it look all blend together a little bit more. And I'm not talking about anything expensive, I'm just talking about light fixtures around the garage, maybe in the front of the house that. Is something that you would see in a seventeen hundreds house home, you know what I'm saying? Just again, to try to make this new boxy addition sort of blend into.
Adding some different detail to it, make it kind of flow and fit in.
Exactly, right. And then the last thing is the staircase. If the staircase wasn't sticking out street side, nobody would care about it, but. Spiral staircases, I don't think were the rage. And and I, I think it's a nice element if it was on the back of your house. I think that'd be really cool. But the whole world can kind of see it sticking out that way and again, I don't. If you like it, I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm just saying to you, I don't know that it it adds to. You know, the addition because it it's this appendage that's sticking out and it's not really historic. In any way, but if it was completely on the back of the house, who would care? But these are your calls, your your addition, so just my personal things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, um. Yeah.
I guess, you know, using the two-prong measurement stick, uh. The second one being is it's substantially more detrimental, although it's not, you know. To my taste, and I think there were some elements that, you know, could be changed, that would make it better. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental. Um I wish it was a little different. But uh I I think using that barometer, uh and again, I'm using the word substantial. I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to Washington Street. So. It's it's not my taste, it's not what I would have done, I don't know what I would have done, um but, you know. I I would, I would have to say I can support it because it's not substantially more detrimental.
Very good. Um I agree, uh you know, again, I I echo the comments of just get um spiral stairs, but I I, you know. I. I feel like I can support it on a criteria basis, certainly appreciate the efforts to um. Ben, some of the architectural elements to blend in with um the rest of the. Architecture on Washington Street, so I can support it as well. Um do we have any further deliberations?
There there was a note on sidewalks, we would.
Oh, yes.
Agreed to approve it, it's quite a long dissertation on. It may have to change curricul, re- reestablish a past department transportation ADA round.
They just redid it two weeks ago.
Uh maybe, could this be? Too old?
At the Summer Street side of the property?
Yeah.
It's the corner of Summer Walk, I mean, but it should be doing.
Yeah, they just redid it, they did a beautiful job.
So this is the recommendation we just got from Public Services, uh did it, is it possible that they gave us their comments on this before, right before they did work, is that right?
No, they gave, they knew the work or they do know the work?
The Department of City, the City is a Department of Public Service and Steve comments to the board is pretty typical for what they thought would be appropriate in this instance.
So may have already been done.
I I'm a little bit confused as of the time, we could be, we basically got this comment, but presumably they would know they were doing it, so I just have a little confusion to me, but.
If you walk by, you'll see it's the, it's done beautifully, nice white pavement and the great ADA approved slow.
And from what I understand, actually, there was, there was another uh treason sidewalks rule. That if the renovation or work amounted to fifty percent of building's value, that there would be. Additional rule engaged there, but this um work does not uh come close to fifty percent.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so. It's pretty. That'd be a big number.
But again, I haven't had a chance to review the comment myself, so.
Yeah, I, so in essence, uh Caitlin, who's not here tonight, I'm saying, and she had noted that the project may trigger the street and sidewalks, to your point. Um as opposed to new unit, it's, you know, the cost, right? Uh which is what you're going to, and here, you know, she had reached out to Public Services, the event that it's definitely not threshold, this is the feedback they gave us. That's a little confusing in the context of work made done there, but it says, um you know, replace the sidewalk to this, from the Summer Street side of the property. Um you know, for the brand, but yeah, um in essence, uh if it's not definitely a threshold, then it just. It's a moot point. Um we are basically incorporating these conditions, when we believe there's a trigger or any question.
Um do we want to craft a motion?
I would request very quickly, if I may, that um or take a quick stropple, there were a few members who didn't. I would request very quickly, if I may, that, um, the board take a quick stop. Well, there were a few members who didn't, um, whose minds were not entirely made up when deliberations.
I, I'm okay with, I'm okay with that. I think, you know, subject to, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Vintas' comments and, uh, where everybody else is. Thank you. Getting to you, so.
All right, um, do we have a motion? And we can incorporate by reference the, uh, street sidewalk conditions. Or any other conditions.
I'll make a motion to approve the application twenty-six Washington Street, C N C twenty-four dash ten. You want to add the green sidewalk condition? If it's applicable to.
Yeah, we can make it very clear that the extent of work of all, obviously, if it's not from that threshold, there's only a bit of air traffic. Um, it might be some bubble suspenders here, but obviously, if we're confident, it's not triple the threshold.
Didn't trip it. It's a moot point.
And if we put up the millions.
Yeah. Oh, and we'll add a condition of added millions to the French doors on the
Carriage style front door and lights.
Carriage style, um, garage door. What about lighting?
Lighting and.
Are explaining?
No, not carriage lighting, but I don't know what it is.
For the opposite, at least, the opposite.
When you walk out the garage, there's gonna be a carriage in there. And a horse is gonna come out.
And let's be clear enough as to what it is. It might be hard to, you know, reinterpret later on or clarify because only measured what they had done. So just if we're, if we're, we might be able to be clear enough here without reviving plans with the door, for instance, or, you know, the million. The French doors upstairs. I don't, I just want to be clear enough if we're making motions, they're closing or they're coming out, and we all understand what is actually is is, uh, being incorporated here as opposed to sort of a vague notion that necessarily do whatever they want.
All in on the French doors on the second, on the second, second floor.
Right. I think we have enough with the garage and with the French doors. I have a sort of concern about what would Jennifer be pointing to to verify?
What would that storage industry say about period by now?
We don't have an opinion from them as, as the lighting pictures would be installed here. So it's not like we could say, here to be storage, we should recognize.
Did the hystericals look at this?
They would, uh, I believe they would.
There's no comment. I, I can't believe it didn't go in front of them and they didn't jump on them down on the garage. Spiral staircase. But I mean, adding a building to the side of it with a spiral staircase. Ground holes, they're bound with hysterical commission. All right. Well, God bless you. You didn't have to go in front of them.
You're in the house good that long.
That's another four months and four hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, we'll leave the light off. So let's get back on track.
All right, so.
We have, we have the motions made with those conditions.
You get the motion, no light.
The trees sidewalks, if that was all, millions on the glass door deck windows and the carriage style garage door.
Correct. Anything? Very good. Um, do we have a second? I'll say, Mr. Bennett, second. Uh, motion made by Mr. Chandler, second by Mr. Bennett, calling the, uh, calling the rule on the motion to approve with those conditions, uh, Mr. Swanton.
It's a little nicer. I'll say.
You win.
Outstanding.
Outstanding. Okay. Uh, Mr. Blot.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
And Rob Chan, I don't guess that is for the affirmative, one extension. Action carries and the application's approved.
Excellent.
That's why you're here.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Good luck to you. Any questions?
Thank you all for being here so late. Appreciate it.
Or any questions to Andy Ford, even if it's two A M. You guys, you guys win, you guys win a prize. Thomas, uh, Lodge and Morgan, Morgan Exteriors. Nine Horton Street. This is an application for a special permit for non-conformities to remove an existing back deck at the rear of the structure. Instruct edition, extend this, the existing non-conforming lot coverage, uh, and rear yard set. May we hear from the applicant that I believe you have, uh, his name is Sir Block.
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 Like H and R, right on two taxes.
Very good. It's block. And, uh,
The homeowners are here also, the Watsons.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. I'm lucky I'm still awake and can see. I assume the proposed sign room, is this where it started off? That's the first page that you have?
Uh, we, we have all the documentation that was submitted. You tell us if there's a particular, uh, I think these are all, uh, something to drawings. So you tell us if you want to.
Okay, you have the one with, uh, the existing one of the deck before.
Uh, it was not in the, I, it's looked to me as if this is a slide deck that gave her that fat layer.
Okay, so.
From what you had submitted.
So current condition is, is right here is there's a fourteen by fourteen deck of which will be tearing down and building a twelve by fourteen sign on slash addition. Where we run into issues is previous measurements, it was seventeen feet from the back lot line. With the new build, it's gonna be twenty, so it's actually gonna be less. Then the next thing that we, we do run into that puts us here is the existing lot coverage. The suppose.
You got it up on the screen.
Oh, good. There we go. So the existing was thirty-three point nine. We're putting a roof over the structure. It is kind of differently, so it's gonna be thirty-eight point one. Minimum open space. We had to remove some pavers to, to take care of some most, oh, open space. Um, so we actually went from forty to forty and a half. Want to scroll to the neighborhood? The overhead. So here we are. If you're wondering what this big white thing is, is, that's a, that's a garage. So that's, this is the lot line. And there's the back of the garage is right there. So we have a non-conforming existing structure. Basically, what you have here is a non-conforming existing neighborhood. This, this is eighteen hundreds, so everything was built. And so everything is tight. As far as it affecting the neighbors, it's, it's gonna improve value. Um, I don't see it worsening the neighborhood in any way whatsoever. Um, most of, most of the existing homes in the area are, are at least as much lot coverage. I mean, some of the houses are sitting on seventy-five percent. Uh, they're all very small lots and big houses. But that's pretty much it. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, not much two things to come into play, in my opinion, maybe in yours is a lot more, but. All right. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Blot.
Yeah.
Uh, I appreciate the presentation and the, uh, and the slides. Ah, there we go. There's a building.
Yeah.
You wanna slide that up? That's a side view. This is the back. This sits on the back of the house.
What, what relief do you, do you need on this project? Where, where are you, where are you missing?
Pardon you?
Where are you missing on this project? We were coming short on, on the.
Coming short on the, the, basically the distance, we're still twenty feet from the back. So it's, we need relief in the back. And then lot coverage, lot coverage is still too much. We increased the, the lot coverage. It was, again, too much. It was thirty-three point nine before. It's gonna be thirty-eight point one. So nothing has really changed. It still is not com- compliant. So those two things, well, we need relief. Okay, um, very good. So, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing in some moment and go to public comment. See anyone here? Don't see anyone online. Anyone online who wishes to, do I see there are three attendees?
It's all family, but it's just.
Uh, and then we also, there was, there was a letter from a neighbor in there.
They want. I think they will. I have not looked.
All right.
Yeah.
Anyone who are wishing. Someone wishes to speak online. Very good. Uh, I'll close that portion. We'll go to questions from the board. So anyone just responded.
Could you put this site plan back? I'm just curious. You made, paying your, your open space, you stayed above the forty percent by getting rid of some of the, uh,
Pavers.
Going on the plan, what pavers disappeared?
Okay, they haven't as of yet, but they will.
That, that shaded area there?
The shaded area. Effectively, um, it's up to say four car driveway. But this part is actually really inaccessible because of the staircase. It's here. So we're gonna remove that portion of it.
And it's gonna be what, grass or what?
It'll be grass or gravel of some sort to.
Something is permeable.
Yeah.
I see.
This doesn't sound there actually as well, but.
Okay, I don't think I have a question.
All right, um, you want?
Uh, yeah, just question with respect to the center of like, will it be clad in the same sort of, uh, clapboards and windows will be similar to the windows of the house? Yes, the, the, the illustration made it look like they were like, kind of Star Wars, like windows.
That's just a top, top front of window, but they're traditional.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, is this like they're like cape, like a chasm or something?
No, there's no, no front doors in there.
Okay. And we're gonna tap it. We're fine as well with the.
Yeah.
Same material.
Very good.
Same material, decided the same as the house.
Yeah.
Yes.
Excellent.
We're kind of pride ourselves in making them match the house when we built them.
Very good.
That was a requirement applying.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. Blot and Mr. Bennett.
I have questions.
Mr. Giffen.
The only question I, I have is, who can see this? It looks like you've got a brick wall behind you.
Nobody can see it.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm not sure.
One neighbor that.
It's quite a bit of privacy there, so no, I.
Yeah, that garage makes it real private.
They have windows, but they're covered in either plywood on the inside or like garbage bags, so they can't even see out to us, but they're all covered up. They're like storage for the apartments that live by them.
I gotta ask just because I'm so curious again. No foundation? This is on peers, precast peers?
Precast period, yeah.
What's happened to the earth? What's happened to America?
You know how expensive, you know how expensive it is to borrow foundation nowadays? It's talking like twenty thousand dollars.
All the excavators out of work.
Oh, they, we're using an excavator. We still use an excavator. Now we dig a trench. We dig a trench and we drop them there.
Uh, no questions. I've got, uh, no questions either. Um, we'll close that and go to deliberations. Thank you. I'll start. There's two-pronged tasks. There are no new non-conformities. Did intensify your, your, uh, coverage, but that's not really a new one. You already hold that. And, and it's in the back. I mean, a- as to whether in the second prong, it's more, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't think it is because it's not that big. It's in the back. It's not that visible from the street. In fact, it's that massive, that massive garage behind. It's not visible from almost anywhere. Um, and it's, uh, so I can support this.
No spiral stairs.
No, I'm good. You're good. Uh, Mr. Gitter? Um, I, did I give you?
Yeah. I was just gonna say that I agree with Mr. Swanton, and I think that like, in a different context, going up from the, the lot coverage might be a bigger deal. You know, if it were located in a different piece of the property, but I think.
Out front.
Yeah, out front, exactly. But here, we're, you know, we're in the back and it's a very secluded, uh, back.
Right.
At that, 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 this is something that I haven't explored, so.
Excellent. Um, all right, um, Mr. Gitter, you, you said you're all set?
Yeah.
You're good?
I'm good. I can support the application. I say, I agree. Looks good, feels good. We can do it.
No further deliberations. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and, um, I will ask for a motion in a second. Motion to approve this special permit for non-conformities in twenty-six Washington Street.
No way, no.
I got it. I got it. Motion to approve the special permission for nine Horton Street. Um, and seconded by, this is the law, motion made and seconded calling the role, um, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Blot.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
And Chen.
Yes.
Chen, I mean, yes, that's why I've been referring to the eyes having. Motion carries. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Good luck to the family and friends online. Tonight and waiting this out. We, we, we've learned from this. We won't do it again where we have application anywhere but at the.
It was fun.
Yeah, it was fun. You'll be able to transfer these spreads to any degree program you would. Thank you. All right, guys, um, I'm gonna close our public hearings, our business meeting. We have the minutes at four twenty-three. Um, any comments, changes, revisions? If not, motion to approve?
I have one comment. Probably just because this gets filed publicly, right? The minutes is reference on page three, paragraph three, there's reference to the candy can that was on the house.
Yes.
I'm gonna guess ninety percent of the people who read that aren't gonna know what a candy can is. So I was wondering if we should say candy can shaped sewage vent.
Yes.
That way, hey.
Twenty years from now.
Some idiot was bitching about a candy can.
I know. I should have, I should have said what it was.
But.
Scooby-doo.
All right, any other comments or changes for, for, for progression?
No.
That's been a great job. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Motion to approve the, uh, minutes. You have a motion to approve the minutes. And seconded? Aye. All right, all those in favor say aye. The, I just have motion carries. Minutes are approved. Um, nothing further from the chair. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Someone similar.
Oh, let's stay longer. Yeah. All right, guys.